Greetings, I'm going to call the Concord School Committee meeting to order. I'll note that we are being broadcast and recorded.
And I'll bring the Concord Carlisle School Committee meeting to order.
Should we just welcome them?
Yep, we have, well, we have two new members, one of whom is here at the moment. David Modell from Carlisle, and his counterpart will be here, will introduce her when she arrives. And we've got some business to do to seat the committee, so we'll turn it over to Lori. Great.
Yep, absolutely.
Sure. So your first order of business is to seat the new committee and elect its officers. So we are, I'm requesting that the Chair of the Concord School Committee call for the seating of the Concord Carlisle School Committee and for the election of officers for the Concord Carlisle School Committee. Other appointments can be made at that time if the committee has worked out assignments. We're going to actually do that later in the meeting. The appointments that require a vote, we also do later in the meeting, but we would like to do, in addition to the Chair of the School Committee, the appointment of Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer for the region.
All right, so I would begin by moving to recognize Court LaBooth, Heather Bout, Yuval Ehrlich, Wallace Johnston, Cynthia Rainey as Concord members, and David Modell and Eva Mustafi as Carlisle, sorry.
Mustafi.
Mustafi, sorry, as Carlisle members of the Concord Carlisle School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a seated committee. We now need to elect officers of the Concord Carlisle School Committee. I would accept nominations for the role of Chair of the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
I'd like to move that Wallace Johnston be named and appointed as Chair of the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
Second.
Any discussion about this?
Thank you.
Are you willing to do this? If we vote you in, Wally.
Yeah, lots of time to think of that.
All right. All in favor then?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, thank you, Wally. You're now officially, not just acting, but officially Chair of the C.C. School Committee.
So we would accept nominations for the Vice Chair of the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
I move that David Modell be elected and appointed as Vice Chair of the Concord Carlisle School Committee.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Are you willing to do this for us? Thank you, David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right.
And we will now appoint the School Committee Recording Secretary for the region.
I move to appoint Erin Higgins as Recording Secretary.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Erin.
Erin does an amazing job for us, thank you so much.
And I take a motion for the appointment of a Treasurer for the region.
I move to appoint Allison Brake as Treasurer of the Concord Carlisle Regional School District.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we thank Allison for her efforts.
Yes. Good.
Now we have to open a public hearing. Do we have any language on that?
Yes, it's right here, I'm opening it. Okay. Well, I have language for the vote. Do we have language for opening the, do we just move to open the hearing?
I really would just recommend it to you, so I'll do that.
We are opening a public hearing first on school choice, and I will hand it over to Dr. Hunter to explain this topic.
Just protocol, are we opening up, in fact, two hearings, one for each district?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll open the hearing for the region.
So annually, school committees have to review their status as to whether or not they're accepting school choice students. The district, the law states that if the district chooses to withdraw from the obligation of enrolling non-resident students, the committee must, before June 1st, after a public hearing, which is what you're in now, adopt and vote the resolution withdrawing from that obligation. So that would be the subsequent vote. Tonight, I am recommending that we do not participate in school choice at either the Concord schools or the high school. That's status quo to where we have been. We have not participated and had students from other districts come to us for the following reasons: space and enrollment certainly being essentially at capacity, and I'm living that regularly, we do not have additional space available, and there's not an equitable or adequate transportation system in place to allow all students to be able to attend school in another district, and thus some would be denied the chance to participate. So based on those reasons, I would again recommend that we withdraw from our obligation, that you would take those votes tonight for both districts.
Any questions or thoughts on this?
I think the evidence is pretty clear that the recommendation is sound.
Yeah, there isn't much wiggle room to look at options on this one, it's pretty clear that we need to.
So seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'd make a motion that the Concord and the Concord Carlisle School Committees vote not to participate in school choice for the school year 2019-2020.
We would want to, I think we need to close the public hearing and then we vote. Is that correct, or am I just being?
I think that's correct. Vote's the important part.
Exactly.
So let's make sure to do it, right?
If you had a contentious public hearing.
Right.
I think that's correct, yes.
We will close the regional public hearing.
And I will close the Concord public hearing on school choice.
So the, yeah, that's probably a good plan. I'll make a motion that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote not to participate in school choice for the school year 2019-2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And for Concord, I would accept a motion not to participate in school choice for the school year 2019-2020.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That one's done and on.
Do we have any public comment? Reading of the minutes?
I would move that we approve the minutes from March 26th and April 8th, 2019. Oh, I would move that, oh wait, they're both, sorry, sorry. So you guys can abstain, oh, that's right, both of these were?
You can, you can vote for the minutes even if you want.
You can vote for them anyway. Or you can abstain, whatever you feel comfortable with. These were both joint meetings, so I, so we need a motion for both committees. So somebody can move.
Score A was not, because I was here, I think. Wasn't that the first?
Score A was the night of town meeting.
Either, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it was still the former committee. That was the meeting before town meeting at town meeting.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the 3/26 and for 8 meetings for both Concord and Concord Carlisle, as they were joint meetings.
Okay, I'll second that for both committees.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And all in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are done. Okay, now we get to move on to the fun part. We have some recognitions.
We do, and so we've invited some Willard students, and I preface this by saying I put this invitation out when this was originally a Concord meeting, so it's a joint meeting with a elementary focus, which is not our normal practice, but we're really glad that the Willard kids are here, and I'll invite Mr. Lucy up and the teachers that are with them, and let them introduce themselves and what they're going to do for us.
So it's only right to just that the kids really have center stage. What you're going to hear about tonight is what teaching and learning looks like in 2019. A departure from teacher center to student center, a departure from being told what to learn, how are you going to learn, and how are you going to be measured that you've learned the material to something that's authentic, that is inspiring to the students with student agency. Thank you to Ms. James and Ms. Hane for their work guiding the students, working with the students, facilitating, but the students did the work, it comes from their passion. When thinking about problem-based learning, and when they're speaking tonight, I ask you, keep in mind their work with inquiry, authenticity, student agency and voice, and lastly, a meaningful assessment, and you couldn't ask for more than to be assessed by the school committee, the superintendent, and your teachers, and their loving families. So, thank you.
The only thing I would ask, is it possible for us to move them this way a little bit so that everybody can be seen?
Would it be possible that the girls could have something so that everyone could see on the active board?
Oh, that would be nice, yeah. Are they allowed to present on the active board? Absolutely. Are they in kid's face? Definitely, is that kid, can they be seen? No. You want to come in here?
They want to use the active board.
They want to use the active board. As a touch board, okay, stay where you are. Use it however you want. So I'll move it for them? Okay. Where would be best for them?
If they could step out here.
If you could step out here, then the camera in the audience can catch them also. Perfect.
Each Friday, we got together for lunch, and while we ate, we talked about the books. First, we would share our parts, and then talk about what had happened. If we wanted to talk about anything that we liked or were confused about, we would do that as well. When we talked about our sections, we chose parts of the book that appealed to us or we didn't like. I mean, even first, we were taking away our Friday recess, but because we all admitted up participating, it is not a big deal. But for some kids, it probably would have been a problem. Once we finished, started getting to the second, the end of the second book we read, I'm Malala, we started comparing the two books. We already read Pencil by Andrea Siers Pinky and I'm Malala by Malala Shihzai. We found that they both had in common, the main character, who's a girl, did not have the same educational rights as boys. So the red pencil is written poems, meaning that it was not very, it didn't take very long to read, and it was very fun to read as well, since you would expect to read a story in poems. And also Amira, and also Amira is the main character of the book, and she is a girl who wants to have the same education as the boys in her village. And she, and she lives in southern Sudan, a place where girls don't, in certain places where girls won't have an education. And her parents had a split opinion. Her mother thought that she shouldn't get an education because she didn't have an education, so, and that was how it always happened, that was the tradition, so that's how it should be for her daughter. And her father thought that she should have an education, most likely because he had an education and knew, and knows how, the opportunities that it gives. And we were also all very surprised that this was based in 2003 to 2004, which for me at least, we expected this to be in the 1800s. This story is based in Sudan, and we're in a jungle, the terrorists, they destroy her village and kill many people she loves. And Amira is so shocked, sad, and angry, she stops speaking and drawing. Then they flee to a refugee camp. She goes along, but she's like empty, she doesn't even like participate. Someone changes her life and gives her a red pencil and a pad of paper, and she finally starts to heal. It took us only about a month to finish the book because it was written poems, so it was pretty quick to read, and we read about 50 pages a week. The second book we read after Red Pencil is called I'm Mal, who's about a girl who loved to go to school. She was grateful of us. Up until she was 10, things were pretty smooth. She was extremely clever and intelligent. When she was 10, terrorists starting to come, calling themselves the Taliban. They made everyone believe their religion was something, it was against their religion not to wear a hijab like women, and they would punish you for not wearing one. This went on for years, but it got worse. The violence started to occur. Schools, houses, offices, shops, everything was beaten to shreds. It went on for so long that the people of Pakistan actually got used to it. Malala first started to protest anonymously, so she would write like diary entries, and they would be broadcasted on the news, and no one knew it was her until her friends found out, because she said something that would only relate to her, and her friends knew about that. And then slowly, she started coming into the public eye. She started speaking to audiences and going on news channels. And then after she, she was protesting a lot, the Taliban really didn't like her protesting so much, so they threatened her. The first time, it was a lot like a warning, they were telling her to stop, and if she kept doing it, something would happen to her. They threatened her again, and this time they came through with it. On her way home from school, the Taliban stopped the bus and asked the driver which one was Malala. Malala stood up and then shot her in the head. And then she was quickly, she quickly went to the hospital after that, but this hospital didn't have enough, like good enough equipment to make her heal, so she would die in that hospital. So she was flown over, which was a really dangerous flight, because the people from England knew that it would, like Pakistan was dangerous at the time, but because it was for someone so important, they knew they should do it. So they flew her over to England, and she went to the Queen Elizabeth Hospital. She went through many, a lot of procedures, and she even got particles of her skull taken out, because her brain was like inflating kind of, and she had the piece of her top skull, like the top of her skull, had to be moved to her stomach, so her brain wouldn't break her skull. And then slowly after that, she started to heal, and she, she wanted to go back to Pakistan, but they knew it was best for her to stay in England. So after we finished both of our books, on Friday, Ms. Hane and Ms. James introduced like this project, that we could choose whatever we wanted, and yeah. It was very open-ended, we had no instruction, no rules, and no limits. Like you could decide when we wanted to start and when we finished? We all chose, we all chose each, each unique project. Isabel did a website about famous women, and she, like Marie Curie, and Elizabeth Blackwell, and I think a few others. Me and Olivia wrote a website about Malala and girls' education, like statistics. And then I made a slideshow, like a presentation, about famous kid leaders, and like how adults are just the leaders, like anyone can be a leader. After we did our final projects, MBR came out like a student podcast challenge, and we thought it would be fun to do that. We decided that both of the books really revolved around girls' education, and that would be the appropriate topic to talk about in our podcast. So we wrote about how girls should have an equal education to boys, and that it should be the same for everyone, because girls should, don't deserve to be, aren't less than boys, and they deserve to have the same rights as every other person. And based on what we had written, those are the parts we spoke, and we all included some of our projects into the script for the podcast. And over a few days, and we, we came up with this podcast script, and we finally went to the Concord Carlisle High School to record it for our podcast. So we want to thank Ms. James, Ms. Hane, Mr. Lucy, and Mr. Ruse for helping us, we made this possible. Mr. Ruse helped us with the equipment for recording our podcast. Ms. James and Ms. Hane just put this book together, and Mr. Lucy helped with it too.
Wow. Oh my goodness.
Well, before we have questions, we want to say thank you, we are very, very impressed. We're impressed with your teachers and your principal, Mr. Ruse, but we're especially impressed with you, so thank you so much for being here tonight.
Incredible. I would love to know, how did the idea of the book club actual, actually come to be?
So I can skip to that, girl. So I think anyone who's known me for more than 10 minutes knows that I like to read, and I like to talk, like to talk about what I read. And Sharon and I were thinking of a way to interact with students outside of their typical reading groups, and find books that were challenging, not only in lexile, but in content. And so both of these books that the girls read are pretty intense, taking place in southern Sudan and Pakistan, and both books that are wonderful to have that deeper discussion around. And so we looked for students who really enjoyed reading and wouldn't mind the idea of taking on extra work. And so all we actually invited each of the girls to participate, and they took their time, thought about it, and decided to join us, and they've been with us every Friday during lunch and recess for the entire year.
Wow.
So on their part, that was the sacrifice, they gave up their lunch and recess, but I wish all of you could be there, because the discussion was so rich, and so present, you know, in our culture to think about, just to be aware of, there are some girls your age and some females around the world that don't have this wonderful right that we have to a free education. And it was just so fascinating to, you know, all of a sudden hear that awareness and have them ask us lots of questions.
Sharon and I saw a lot of confusion, and then a lot of anger, and then a lot of passion, as they sort of explored these books. And it was all second what Sharon said, we really weren't blown away by how intelligent and how driven and how kind this group of five girls was. It was a very collaborative effort, so we picked the books, but the girls decided how much they wanted to read every week, they decided what they wanted to talk about, they decided pretty much everything else. Their projects were as open-ended as they described them.
There was guidance, it might not have been instruction, but there was a little product.
But we did give them, you can have it on any topic, and it can take place in any form. And it was great to see what they could produce with no limits.
Wow.
It was so fun to go to the high school. Mr. Ruse was just wonderful. With greeting us, with bringing us into that radio station, our eyes were, oh, this is so cool. And then being able to make the girls feel comfortable and sit down and let them know what to do, it was just a great collaboration and experience.
So the girls had sacrificed their Friday breaks, but nothing better than those books actually to demonstrate, it's not a sacrifice, it's a privilege to read and discuss books.
Actually, our original plan for the book club was to read another set of books in the spring, but we kind of really got honed in on this idea, and kept going for it, kept going with it for the entire year, which was pretty wonderful.
And so this is the first time ever that MBR has held a contest, a contest for students, and they were overwhelmed with the number of entries. So we were in a category of 5th grade through 8th grade. And I think they were just as surprised, and because of the feedback, they're going to try to do this every year. But it was just a great opportunity for them, and we used to talk about, so what audiences do you want to share this message with? It could stay here, it could stay within our school, it could go as far as you wanted to go. So it was a great venue.
That's terrific.
Thank you.
Girls, congratulations, thank you so much for sharing. And Kate and Sharon, thank you for your leadership. That's great. Good stuff. Thank you all for being here for that, and don't feel badly walking out, we won't be offended if you don't want to listen to the rest of the school committee business.
So we have, yeah, we'll, let's see if the camera can come back.
Yeah, exactly.
Hi Cynthia, it's nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you so much, have a good night.
Before we say goodbye to the outgoing members, I'd want to welcome Eva Mustafi to the school committee. We look forward to a long association. Thank you for joining us.
And we officially seated you already.
There will be an upgrade to them.
We all started with temporary name tags, just got it right there.
Part of the induction.
One of the things we've been remiss to, like lately, is taking fresh pictures for the website.
Oh, yeah. A lot of times, we took a photo.
Might not be anybody on there, but you and me. So we have sadly, a number of members who are leaving, have left the committee at this point, that we would like to recognize.
And we have them here, we dragged them back.
They are here, three of the four are here. So why don't we start with the one who's not here? And so Mary was, how long was she, three?
Oh my goodness.
Nine years at the name Carlisle. She was, she was here for, I think, two different tours. And so Mary's tours, she did a phenomenal job for us, and was always diligent, and the, I served on the policy subcommittee with her for a couple of years, and there was nobody more detail-oriented than Mary. So, you know, I think the policy manual's in pretty good shape, and we can thank Mary for that.
Thank goodness.
She served on the campus committee, which, you know, did a lot of good work around the outside of the building over the last couple of years. And, you know, we have her thank for that, and there's ongoing work ahead of us relating to the things that came out of that committee. And then she just finished serving as the Vice Chair of the region, so put in a lot of time, and has now moved on to other pastures. Anybody want to make?
Well, you used, you used the word diligent. I thought the mark she left was just that, that she did her homework, and set the bar very high for doing the homework for the school committee, and I know it took a lot of time. I don't think she slept on any of those plane rides, those plane trips. When she traveled internationally on business, she was carrying school committee work with her most of the time, apparently. So I think we're very much in her debt for the diligence that she brought to the committee.
Absolutely, I would say the same, as I've said of one other person in this room, she kept us on our toes, and she brought so much value and insight, and so often caught us on things that we weren't necessarily going to catch, and brought such great feedback from Carlisle all the time, that it was just wonderful to work from her, for, with her. And, boy, the insight and institutional knowledge that she continued to share with us, we will absolutely miss. And we may get her back for a, a quick visitor award here at some point, but we're not sure yet, so, but we will certainly share our appreciation of her tonight also, anyway.
Any other comments? So big shoes to fill, new members from Carlisle.
Good luck.
Christine, could you come up?
Get on up here.
Christine Lee is still serving on the Carlisle Committee, correct? And we have, they, she's served a year with us, it was a busy year, we had a lot going on, and certainly appreciate everything you did, and the things we had working for town meeting, and just keeping us surprised to what the tenor of things were in Carlisle as we were talking about issues. And as, as we all know, these things take some time to kind of get into the flow of things, and, you know, just as, as you were kind of getting there, it's, you know, off to, off to other places. But thank you for all the work you did with us, and it was a pleasure.
I'm in awe of what you've accomplished and I am so excited that the school systems for both Concord and Carlisle are in your very capable hands. And keep up the good work. I'll be here in a year. And so thank you all for your friendship and for the hard work that you do for the schools and for being so good to me.
You made it a pleasure. You and I were first-year school committee members at the same time, so we both got to share the balcony seats, which you know. And it was very helpful to me to have your counsel so you and I could check in on things before we had to burden the more experienced members, so thank you for your support.
Is that a huge for a seat?
Well, I wrote down a few things that I wanted to say about you. Christine, you already proved one of the things I was going to start with, which is that Christine will come in here and start complimenting everybody else about how wonderful they are and that she doesn't give herself enough credit. And I wanted to say, let's get straight first, that if you're to believe Christine and her self-deprecating humor, always giving credit to everyone else, literally, this is what I wrote, this is what you did, and raving about how smart they are, you might not think she'd done much herself, but don't be fooled because Christine is incredibly insightful and thoughtful and just so smart. And you brought so much to us with your ability to listen quietly to a full discussion of something and process it all and then very nicely bring up something that we all missed and somehow make us even feel like maybe we thought of it when you just nudged us to do that. Your creative ideas and your ability to make us laugh and to make us appreciate things are just wonderful and you brought us so much joy here and compassion and insight and you will be sorely missed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just one word from Carlisle. Christine has always been willing to pitch in whenever needed. We had now two years running, we've had the departure of experienced regional representative, first Melissa and then Mary. And we asked Christine to step in and she just volunteered. It's a big ask, she did it. And this year we asked her to help nurture our new chair, Melinda Gambino, who's her second year. And, you know, we're relying on Christine to be the vice chair and to shepherd that process. So we're trying, you know, we have turnover, we manage it and I'm just always very grateful. Christine has a great attitude, as you all remarked, and always will just pitch in without any compromise. Thank you.
And you can't walk away without having earned a varsity jacket. Thank you so much. Okay, next up, Mr. Bob Brom. Come on up here.
Just be kind to him.
Oh, no, we're going to lay it to you finally. Should I start this time?
Sure.
Okay, I'll start. I'm not going to read this whole thing because I printed out what I read at town meeting and that took too long. So I'm just going to give you the highlights, which is that Bob is an incredibly humble and yet insightful addition to our committee and has been for three years. It's, as I said, it's a story that began even before he was elected because for the couple of years before he joined us, he was going to select board meetings and school committee meetings and so many other meetings at town, we'd run into him everywhere. And so he educated himself so much on what was going on and how it worked and what we were doing. But instead of just asking questions and pushing, he said, "I'm into," and he stood up and joined us. And having that experience gave him and all of us so much. But the other thing that I wanted to point out is just the word that comes to mind when I think of Bob, which is integrity. He has such incredible integrity and will always tell us what he truly thinks and tell us in such a respectful way. And all of that that you've brought to us will also be sorely missed. So thank you so much for all that you've done in the past three years.
Well, it was a great three years for me. A lot of things were accomplished. Number one, sitting sits over for me and also number two.
Two of our greatest accomplishments.
Improvement of what we had before. But also, you know, we improved relationships with the FinCon and the Select Board in my opinion. We created the Budget Finance Committee and we did a lot of work at the campus, the high school campus, and that's now working itself through the system. But most importantly, what I want to highlight is that, you know, we really formed great relationships on the committee, friendships really, that I think is, you know, maybe the most important thing. And that manifested itself really in our incredible effort for the middle school project. And, you know, we had, we had three leaders among a very thoughtful and cooperative team that really made that all possible. And, you know, I'm not going to name names, but I think the individuals know what I'm talking about and it was, it was just great and to be continued. So you've got a lot of work to do, I hope, and I thank you, you know, for the recognition.
Thank you.
Good. You asked that we be kind. That's not particularly hard in your case. In fact, that's a word that quickly comes to mind. I'll mention again, being a new school committee member, I was looking for guidance and you were very, very ready and willing. I at first thought you were a fellow who was going to be my mentor because I knew the committee, but then realized very quickly that in fact you're what most people would call a servant leader. You looked around this table and around the community and looked for ways to make everybody more capable and did it with extraordinary decorum that I think is one of your legacies for this committee. Thank you very much.
Well, you should have wanted to say something.
Apart from my normal shite. I can remember four years ago when you sort of arrived on the scene and conquered from wherever you had been, you'd been here but not quite out public and we all kind of wondered, what's he going to do? Who is this guy? He was at select board meetings, he was at FinCon meetings, he was at school committee meetings. We didn't know if we were being audited for something or not. And then I got a phone call one day and says you'd asked me to come have coffee and you had told me of your decision to run for school committee in one of what had not been a lot of contested races. And that's always, you know, that's a real challenge to make that decision to serve and to run in contested races. And, you know, we all wished that there were more of those because it creates a dialogue that we often don't get and voters don't get when we have uncontested races. So first my hat's off to you for doing that. I have to chastise you for leaving after one term, just when we were getting you trained up. But no, you really did your homework before you got here and one of the hallmarks of our experience with you is that you did your homework when you were here. And you were always willing to take on the chores and always with a light heart. And I appreciate that and I really am glad of you.
And, oh, did I have the right one? One more second. And you earned yourself a varsity jacket. Okay, Joanna, come on, get up here. Now we get to talk about you.
This is so.
I know.
Here's your man on.
Close up on Joanna. All right, who gets to start? I'll start. Okay, I will start because I've been looking forward to this because Joanna kind of created her own tradition. As many people stepped off and rolled off this committee, she would write them a letter. And it always started, "Dear departing member." So I thought Joanna needed a Dear Joanna letter. So this one I'm going to read, sorry. But this is the letter. Dear Joanna, this letter has been a long time in the writing. It is a letter of thanks and appreciation for all that you have given to these two districts, the committees, and each of us individually over the past six years. This includes a long list of accomplishments, of course, many of which Wally outlined for us at town meeting. But I'm going to focus not on those, but specifically on what you have brought to us as a person. So let's start with the obvious. Thank you for the incredible, now that doesn't even capture it, the superhuman efforts that you have given to this experience that we call school committee. The work, the time, energy, research, creativity, preparation, advocacy, campaigning, committee chairing, and even logging many miles behind the wheel in the efforts of the school committee. The list is endless. Thank you also for your dedication to helping your community. This is clearly giving of yourself and your time is not something you do because you should or just because you've been asked. This is something you do because it's who you are and it's so clear in everything that you do. And it really means a lot to this community because you give so much time and heart for the betterment of others and that is really meaningful. Thank you for your determination. There aren't many people who can come even close to claiming the level of determination that you have. Now, we'll be clear, this isn't in the letter, but when you're up against Joanna and her determination, it's not easy, but when you're working with her, you really appreciate it. Once you see what needs to be done, watch out because from concept to strategy to execution, you dive in and you make it happen. And I will say, really, and this is important, working so closely, especially even on the middle school initiative over the past six months, I feel like we all, and I in particular, have really benefited from this. And I felt like we were hands working together seamlessly and that we couldn't have gotten as far as we did without that sense of teamwork. And it was really, really enjoyable working with you. But life isn't just all about outcomes, right? Especially when you're not being paid for your work and outcomes. It's also about having fun and the laughter. So thank you for the laughter that you provided along the way. You always came up with some clip about in the let's be real category of humor and some of my favorite moments in working with you have been when your filter momentarily turns off. But we won't go into all those now. Lastly, and most personally to me, thank you for your honesty and genuine feedback. At one point you had the courage to sit across from me and give me some difficult feedback and it was not an easy conversation, but I truly valued it and took it to heart. And I think from there we were able to really work together well and I've always admired that and just been very thankful for the time that I've had to work with you. So Joanna, in summary, thank you for all you've given to us and for the time that we've had to work and laugh and celebrate together. I will miss you. Wow.
So it's sometimes said that politics is the art of wrestling with all the competing stakeholders and trying to satisfy to some degree all of those stakeholders. But first you have to know the stakeholders and second you have to understand them. And I think that's one of the true gifts you brought to this committee, in fact, you brought to the town. And it stems from your love of Concord. So that's been abundantly clear to me in my short time with you. I want to thank you for the ability to bring to this committee the perspectives of so many stakeholders that we're trying to satisfy with such an important mission called K-12 Education that serves not just those K-12 students, but in fact, everybody in this town who has a hand in what we're doing. So thank you, thank you very much. And yes, to Heather's point, you make very hard work look fun sometimes, so thank you. Well, one of my favorite things to do as a school committee member was to speak about Joe Demme. And, but the, what we've been through together is pretty extraordinary. And, you know, there are only a few of us who know what all of that entailed. And, you know, having done the work we've done and to be where we are is one of the most important things I've done in my life. And to have shared that with you and to have our relationship grow over the five years we've done this together has been, well, obviously means a lot. And, you know, we've been on the same side of issues, we've been on opposite sides of issues. We've left this room at times probably wondering if we'd ever speak to each other again. We have, we have left after having accomplished great things and the high that comes with that. And, you know, through all of that, I have always known that as I said at town meeting, you got kids best interested in. And everything Heather said is absolutely true, you're a born leader. And you've taught me a lot. I hope maybe I've taught you a couple of things. But I know that, you know, I will, I will remember everything we've been through together for the rest of my life. And I'm sad as you leave the committee. I think we are less because of it. We will, we will grow into our new committee and Concord has, should have nothing but thanks to you for the amount of effort and work you've put into this job for the last six years. And I suspect you will still be around and still engage and then do some wonderful things for the community going forward because that's who you are. So my hat's off to you, my great thanks. And I'm the lucky one because we're still working together until we get a contract, until we have that wonderful fund. But thank you, both from the committee and from the bottom of my heart for being a friend and colleague.
So I wasn't really prepared to say anything, but I, thinking and watching you and having come in here tonight, yeah, we've been through a lot and we've been, especially you and I, because it's been almost the whole time I'm on the committee. And it hasn't always been easy, but we have, I agree, when you're in the trenches with each other and you got to go in the same direction and fight the same fight, you really learn to, you learn a lot about yourself and how to, how to work as a group and luckily everybody else was of the same mindset. And we got, we got a long way and we, you know, they were, you always ask me like that I liked doing the job and what I liked about it most was that I always felt challenged and that there were aspects that were going to make me grow, but you also realize that you start to earn friendships and respect and in relationships that they're sort of, you know, unexpected and really are, while we did a lot of great work, that really made it rewarding and you did articulate it well, Wally. I think one of my favorite nights here was when we voted unanimously and talked about Lori to be our superintendent and I realized we can do this when we're all behind, you know, something and we work together to get there and that was a really rewarding. That was a really rewarding night, it's really exciting, I think, for all of us to feel like, all that we had been through, we still, we came together on that. And, you know, we've all been thrilled ever since and with Jared. And that's the part I hate leaving, people. My family's very happy that I want to be back. But thank you for those really kind words and just know that in my heart, it's, it's been some of the, some of the best stuff I've, I've done and the friendships and the, the growth of relationships is, is the best part about it. And I'm, you're lucky, you guys all get to at least keep seeing each other. We'll do a little more until we get a contract, but I'm envious in a lot of ways. So thank you, and thank you for the hard work all of us did together. Really, it was awesome.
We'll miss you. And maybe we'll think of excuses to drag you back.
That's okay, I make up. And I have always worn one of those jackets.
And you get a jacket.
All the time.
I wanna hug you.
He gets to give it to you.
You won't wear it?
Every time we gave one of the jackets. And this is a Barry Haley, this is Jared's. I'm back to the YouTube jacket. It's a Barry Haley jacket tonight. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll miss you too. Not the light nights, but our work and hopefully still.
Yes.
For sharing about it. Thank you both. You're awesome. I'm gonna miss it. Where do we find us? We need a pep talk.
We'll invite you back in about a half hour when we need to talk some business. You don't have to leave.
There.
All right.
New committee is reporting.
Now.
So.
Chair's reports.
Chairs and chairs and reports.
Yeah. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Have you done anything yet as chair? Come on. Get on it, Wally.
I opened the meeting. As acting chair.
That's right. We should mention and just pay tribute to and thank Chris Whalen, who is retiring soon. And his retirement party is coming up this week, Thursday evening, which I think people are invited to. So we'd just like to send a greeting and tribute out to Chris Whalen as well, who is retiring soon.
For anybody who's picking this broadcast up tonight, there's also a public appreciation tomorrow night at TRICOM, 6 o'clock.
Oh, tomorrow?
Is it not? And then there's another employee you want on Thursday?
No, the public one is Thursday.
The public one is Thursday.
Two things on Thursday.
Okay, so the public one is Thursday evening, six.
Very good.
We're supposed to ask.
And it's been.
So Thursday evening at six.
A quarter century that he's been with us and very, very attentive to the schools and the kids in town.
Yeah, absolutely. Other than that, we didn't have, I didn't, we don't have liaisons yet for this group and I didn't have much else to report as, as chair.
Couple of things later in the meeting.
Yeah, things that we can update on later in the meeting. So let's pass it over to Lori for superintendent's part.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And this, this is a pretty eclectic report. It's been a little while since I've reported and so many of you are new, so bear with, bear with a little bit of hopping between elementary and K-12 and back and, you know, there's a lot of work that's been going on and I just wanted to capture all of it. So our first topic really is an update on the elementary assistant principals. You'll remember in January, I asked if I could explore the option of reallocating positions at the elementary schools in order to consider incorporating assistant principals. The need really comes from the evaluation process. They are the only evaluators in the school, as well as special education, where they service team chair, plus everything else that they do. And we had recognized the need many years ago, frankly, and saw a window of possibility here because of a few, couple of retirements and reconfiguration of roles. We've taken this process really slowly and very inclusively with the teachers, continue to work with them throughout the discussions on what their thoughts were on assistant principals, what their thoughts were on the specialists that were servicing them, what their thoughts were on external and internal possibilities to fill those roles. And it's really been an ongoing, pretty intimate dialogue since January, which is why you haven't heard from me, because we were in a place, I'm not quite sure how we were gonna land, if we were gonna end up with a conclusion that this really was a good idea. I think we're to the point tonight where we're pretty, we think it is a good idea. We've vetted those different roles and the, we run the schools and the ways in which we service kids, prime, first and foremost. And we actually put a posting up internally to see who the internal candidates were. We then had interview committees begin to interview those. Two out of three have concluded, the third one's this week. So all three schools will run that process. And it's feeling like thus far, at least the first two schools have felt very, really great about the opportunity here with the internal candidate and the shift of role that that person would bring to them while we share with them the plan for coverage of whatever role that they had. So this is not quite cost neutral, but pretty close in terms of just reallocating who's doing what. It is a second administrator, I certainly acknowledge that. That was by design because our evaluators have to be of that certification and either a supervisor or a principal or assistant principal. And so I think tonight I'm here to give you any more information that you'd like. We are comfortable, the CTA has given us positive feedback, the teachers throughout the process. And I'll be honest, we didn't start in the perfect place. We had a few hard discussions at the beginning of this to talk through concerns and questions and process and really dialogue through. And I think we're better for having had so much of first kind of hard conversations and then really informative conversations with each other. But I think we're in a place where we're really excited about what this opportunity brings. The principals are excited about it. Naomi's been engaged at Alcott, so she's aware of what's happening and has had a phone interview and been part of the decision. So we're looking for permission to reconfigure the roles and create these assistant principalships. And then that last stage of the process would go forward where the principals would recommend this, the people to me, and I would meet with them and we'd go forward with offering contracts and such. So it really is a discussion for tonight for you to give me feedback on whether we finish and continue the process and go forward with this if you have other questions and concerns we need to consider.
One question I have, just in the structure of this, because people are coming from inside the building. Obviously, they're gonna be leaving their teaching role, which will, just in the course of our summertime work, fill those positions. And hats off to being able to do this in a, in a relatively cost neutral way, even though I think if, if we, we have been dealing with this sort of challenge for peers. And we've, we've sort of band-aided things, we've done things to, to make it better. But I think, I think this is a really good idea. And I'm assuming that the people who are moving in, will move into these positions, this is sort of, as permanent as any administrative position is. It's not.
Right. We've offered them, we've offered them agreements that they would not lose seniority and their understanding in the union, should it not work. So protection to them that they're still with or not the bargaining unit if it doesn't go forward. So I expect we'd offer one-year contracts. We're looking at an 11-month contract, not a 12. We think we can do two weeks before and after school and that would be sufficient. In terms of the roles they've had, they're all specialists of some kind, which is often a position that both supports teachers through coaching and those, that kind of an adult role, as well as servicing students directly. So we're looking at which part of that role they may still maintain and which part of that role we're backfilling to, to do some coverage. Again, within, within the scope of staff that we have, we haven't had to add people to do that. So it's been a lot of creative thinking, I think, at each school to figure out what that would look like.
So I would just say, I'm fully supportive of this, having seen over time the need growing, especially in terms of evaluation. I mean, I think these schools need somebody else to help do evaluations, especially because we see that as so important. And that evaluation process and the time in the classroom is important for the teachers and for the whole process. So my one question was, it sounds like if you have, you're close in this process with internal candidates, that means that we wouldn't even post it externally. We wouldn't even need to post externally. It's almost correct, done as is.
Correct. And that was somewhat by design because in order, frankly, to be sure that we had cost neutrality.
Right.
We're, we're trying to see what we had within that we could reconfigure versus add a position. You know, my message to the principals and to the teachers were, I'm never gonna be comfortable bringing three administrative, you know, new positions to the committee in a budget.
Right.
That's just an exorbitant increase that we're never gonna be able to absorb. So this is kind of the one opportunity, I think, in my tenure to reconfigure, given some natural turnover that was already happened. So we did feel like we want to start with the interim people. We also said that if the interim people weren't the right people, we would step back and reconsider. And we definitely would do that. It hasn't proved to be the case necessarily yet. And I think it likely will be, but they, they didn't just get an automatic invitation for the administration.
Of course. That's great.
There's three people internally from the elementary schools. Do you shift them between the elementary school or are some of them is gonna stay in his office?
Good question.
I was thinking about the evaluation process, which they have to evaluate, people that have been working these three years.
Right. We've talked a lot about that and we've talked different directions on that. And right now, we think there's benefit to them staying within the schools they know. That, that was the initial concern from the teachers and also within the candidates themselves. So we vetted that, we feel really thoroughly. And the principals know they need to continue to be part of that discussion and support as people start to evaluate people they've been colleagues with. So we, we feel pretty, we feel comfortable with that because we've had so much discussion with the individuals and with the, with the teachers themselves. We discussed at length whether they would switch schools around and really came to the conclusion that the pros outweigh the cons to leave them in a school they really knew. And the school benefited from that and that we would be very conscious and aware of the cons and that we needed to really process them and continue to process them.
Yeah, just one question. I'm sure over time, we will hear how you're measuring the, the impact of this change. We're gonna see teaching competencies grow faster than they would otherwise. Presumably, we're gonna see learning outcomes that are related to this. What do the principals tell you about how this is gonna change their lives?
Oh, wow, wow. You know, the evaluation system alone, which should be an incredibly powerful professional collaborative tool with teachers. Yes, there are moments where it's about improving a teacher that's underperforming, but most of the time, it's about professional relationship. And they have no time for that right now and it frustrates them immensely. The professional frustration I hear in them, especially this time of year, is they're trying to wrap up and they're just paperwork churning right now and not doing what they wish they could be doing to give staff valid, valuable feedback. So we're shortcutting the evaluation process in many places. When there's a teacher we're concerned about, that'll be where our attention goes. But for the large majority of them, it's just not what it could be. So that's greatly frustrating. I think the other side is the special education. It's a constant tap dance with them being the team chair in the building of what they can delegate and what they own themselves. And there's just gonna be a broader scale of support there, which is gonna be immensely valuable. And then they'll be looking at what day-to-day pieces they might be able to, you know, split up and share, which the more time we split up and share those at the leadership role, the more time we're instructional leaders. And that's, that's ultimately the job we want them focused on.
And some of that cooperative work is gonna be building-based and need-based for a particular building. It's not gonna be the same across the three necessarily.
Correct. It will, will have a flavor at each school based on the principal that's there and the way, the way they see the best fit.
And what are the unintended consequences of this that you want to avoid? Communication gaps?
We're gonna have to focus on that. I think some of the longer-term work is the communication among the three elementary schools anyway. I think we're gonna be able to actually, my hope is we're gonna do better at that because there'll be, won't be just the one principal that I'm trying to catch and Kristen's trying to catch and we'll have other, other people to talk to as well. So I think that will be beneficial. It's new. It's new. So we're gonna be building, you know, working through a brand-new position that hasn't happened before. So there's bound to be some bumps there. But I think we've created a pretty open dialogue where we can hear what those questions and thoughts and concerns are as they happen and address them immediately.
If I understand right, it's not a one-way street between, if you're familiar with it, after 12 months, you're going to go back to...
Sure, yeah, we could if, if it isn't working.
One thing I want to clarify, your tenure to date.
What's that?
Just, the way you described that was like...
Say that again.
You said, "The one thing I'll be able to do during my tenure here."
Yeah. To date, right. Your tenure to date. I just know, no matter how long I stay, I don't see me bringing $300-plus thousand dollars to this position. So that's the way I, that's how my team heard it, was, "I'm not going to do that." So.
But I would, I would think, and I don't know if, how much of this goes on now because this has been so hard to do because it is such a, it's a significant, it's a huge body of work that has to get done over here. But having these three folks who are gonna be focused on evaluations, I would think would give us an opportunity to district-wide be able to collaborate on.
No question.
How that's going and how it's working and, you know, just get better at it and...
And that was one of my goals this year and I accomplished a portion of it in ways I hadn't expected. And it became clear that the work on these, this position, these positions, as well as some culture work, was the foundation to making that an effective process. So the combination of those, the conversations happening about culture and allowing for another position to support teachers means we can actually create the authentic process we wish it was.
Great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Other highlights, and I won't go through all of this unless you have questions, I'll try to do a high-level view. Special education programming, we are really engaged in building in-house programs and that's across all of the schools, whether it be language-based or social-emotional, right up through the 18 to 22-year-olds that were required to service after they've reached that age. So it's a really active team process right now among the principals and the special education leadership and the teachers to look at what our options are. So that, that plan is evolving through reallocation of current staff, as well as use of circuit breaker if we need to. Jared and I are seeing in constant discussion about that. Because we also are looking at savings from tuitions and other, we can, other work that we're doing to save funds in other places. So we're gonna get all that in one place for you as we get definitive structures in place and can put dollar amounts to it. But it's turning out to be a really exciting, exciting process that is gonna save us money over time, but also serve kids better. And it's happening at all, great, at all levels. There's a really motivated group of people to take the energy that's started and put more programs in place. So it's more to come on that. I did give you an update on English language learners and this need is coming out of really middle and high school both. We have a couple of newcomer students with their particular situations that are requiring a lot of individual service, which is per the mandate. So that in combination with the regulations changing to service preschool is, is going to result in our need for an additional ELL teacher. So that might be a split position. I think it's gonna be a split position where the high school will pay a portion and the K-8 will pay a portion. We're still getting a little more detail on what the schedule will look like so we can firm that up. But we don't have any, we need to do right by the kids and the law.
Thank you for staying on topic.
Yeah, in that same mode, you know, enrollments and staffing, it's that time of year where we're just constantly watching moving numbers, whether it be high school enrollments where sections are a certain size and we have decisions to make about what we run and what we don't. Mr. Mistrillo is looking at options for where, if he has lower numbers, what he might be able to fund somewhere else. And that's an ongoing discussion with Jared and I. Constant watch of the elementary schools. A year ago, Willard's kindergarten class coming in was low, so we did reduce a section. That number's crept up over the years, so we're gonna need a first grade, additional teacher back to first grade. We're also watching incoming kindergarten registrations, which are, you know, you do the registration and you know you've got a large percentage of the kids, but you don't know if you have them all and you have to just keep monitoring it. So there's a lot of that going on. There's one or two other places we might be able to reduce. So my, our hope with our fingers crossed is it's fairly neutral overall, but there's no promise of that quite yet. That's why we have contingencies in the budget. This is really that place where we know we may need them and try to predict what's coming So there's a lot of that going on. There's one or two other places we might be able to reduce, so my, our hope with our fingers crossed is it's fairly neutral overall, that there's no promise of that quite yet. That's why we have contingencies in the budget. This is really that place where we know we may need them and try to predict what's coming this summer, so we're not doing quick things in August and that sort of thing. Some more to come as those numbers firm up.
Quick question, the ninth, incoming ninth grade?
Yeah.
The sort of balance between that volume?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, thankfully. We just talked about education evaluation, student wellness. We hosted, the high school hosted the local Challenge Success Spring Conference this weekend. We had teams from both the middle and high school there. I already heard some feedback coming out of them as they report back out to their buildings and what they're hoping for as we go into next year, so I'm sure that work over the last weekend will be anchored in the school improvement plans that you see coming forward to you in June. School safety, we have our last meeting, committee meeting of the year on Thursday. We've accomplished a draft, solid draft of an updated emergency plan and are in constant contact with the police and fire departments. We're looking at an app, so another out report to come to you as we finish the year's work there. I think we've just elevated the focus in a way that needed to happen, and so I think if nothing else, that was accomplished while we look at, you know, concrete outcomes of apps and plans and security cameras and things like that, but the discussion of how we operate in a secure way is already higher. You know, police chief's already talking to me about the new middle school, as should we have a successful vote and be working on that scheme, schematic design this summer. That leads into the middle school facility as we talk on the immense amount of work going on there over the summer. We were at their staff meeting this afternoon, and we're taking on a little bit. It's all in line up with the move between teachers and painting and rugs, and it's all set up all the way to the master schedule. Teachers are going to know their schedules with students actually placed in it by Friday. Immense amount of work going on there, but all really exciting and forward-moving, so. Cultural proficiency, I think, you know, I'm looking forward to this ongoing dialogue. We've had, again, more things happen that are now coming from other directions that aren't necessarily administratively initiated. Debbie Irving, the High School Parents Association, hosted her as author, and that was very well-received. A very thoughtful dinner happened and then her presentation afterwards. Other opportunities like a documentary, documentary about Mecca, and when we were through the work we're doing and sharing that with Mecca Inc., when this, this production company, really formal professional production company rolls out the documentary in the fall, they'd asked if they can come do it at CC. So we're starting to get a bigger-picture rapport out in the world at large as a district that cares about this and wants to have these conversations. We need to keep having them, there's no question. We still have plenty of work to do, but it's exciting to watch it build from a lot of different directions. Yeah.
Cultural proficiency. I've attended a presentation as a member of the SAC of Mecca and Principal Mistrullo. There is a very, it's very one-way program in the school. Its cultural proficiency was meant for Mecca to actually, and the idea is that it will be a challenge, but it has to be a, cultural proficiency should be a, not only for...
Oh, correct. We completely agree with that, and plans that we'll be rolling out. So we've brought in that definition well beyond race. Certainly, the Boston students are a part of our discussion because we do feel strongly committed to making them feel included here, but we also believe we need to better serve kids of different religious backgrounds. This month it's been about Ramadan and doing better with fasting students, and I think if nothing else, at least we're more aware of who's fasting and trying to better support them, for example. In the fall, our focus with the staff when we open school will be on inclusivity of special needs and disabilities, so that'll be the keynote speaker. So it isn't just a racial focus, it's a much broader focus about making sure everyone feels included. So that means there's lots and lots of work to do and ongoing conversations to have. So more to come on what our plans are going to be for next year. The conversation we had in this room this morning as a leadership team was making sure we start to really give our staff concrete, tangible how-tos of what is this, what is this awareness and proficiency look like in my classroom, and taking it down to a little more, you know, concrete opportunity for them, thinking on their own practice. So we have lots and lots of work to do, and I think you value it completely right. We totally agree with that. Community and collaboration, there was too much to put here, so there's so much going on right now. It's so much fun. If you didn't see the drowsy chaperone over the weekend at the high school, I'm sorry, you missed like Broadway, Off-Broadway. It was absolutely amazing, but we got lots of other special activities, you know, graduation's coming up June 1st, so you're all welcome. Let us know if you're planning on attending. So senior week, the other transition, end-of-year things. It's a big long list and really, really great time of year. Super busy, but really fun, so.
That's good stuff.
Thank you.
Can I, just one thing out of this that I was thinking about for our new members from Carlisle in particular. The work that we do at the high school around special ed and especially the 18 to 22-years, which you would not experience in your district in Carlisle, plus some of the Mecca activities, it might be worth reaching out to Mike to go up and kind of get a firsthand look at that. Because, you know, throughout the year, we will refer to things like that, but, you know, we're all sort of living it day in, day out.
Yeah.
And we'll just kind of brush over it, and it's, you know, it's significant, and we're making big strides in doing new things and trying to keep kids here rather than outside the district, but it's worthwhile having a better sense of, you know, what we're doing.
Yeah, and I think that invitation is open to all of you coming new on the committee. Just let me know and I'll work with the high school leadership. I think spending a little time with our Mecca director would be fantastic, with our special ed department chair at the high school, give you a lot of windows into where we're at and where we're aiming for. So just let me know, that just helps them to collaborate, yeah, I can coordinate for you and set it up. Great. Thank you. I mean, you veterans are welcome to.
Well, thanks.
Just walk around and nod your head.
Is Mecca doing that and goes there for special education? Is that Mecca leading that or is that the special ed?
So it depends on which part of the projects you're talking about. Mecca is focused on the Boston kids who come to school here. Special education is focused on students with disabilities. That doesn't mean those two never overlap, of course. Slightly different areas of focus in each, so we'd love to sit with you and talk through each, each piece of the work we've been doing there, trying to make sure we're serving all kids really effectively.
Moving on, we get to talk about a fun topic.
Yeah. So...
Do we have no correspondence?
We...
Oh, I skipped that, sorry. My bad. I was thinking that was right after. Correspondence, no, no, I can't.
It is a fun topic.
I jumped right ahead of that one. I have it listed right here. So correspondence, from the CPS side, we got one very nice email praising the K-8 band program with just high accolades and great descriptions of what an amazing experience it is for the students, which was terrific. And then we just had an email and follow-up about, a request for a potential agenda item that we're talking about process, and that was it.
So...
Oh, you've all had a question?
Oh, sorry.
Not a question, I just want, I read the email about the two middle school bandleaders and teachers, music teachers. I just wanted actually to mention, because it was never mentioned here before, that the high school senior band had 10 days trip to Japan. It was extremely successful, and then came here, won gold in MICA and played in Symphony Hall.
That's true, that's right.
And extremely successful, extremely well performed with David David Gresson.
Yes. Thank you.
It's true, the high school, yeah. That band too is incredibly successful. Thank you all for pointing that out.
So next item on the agenda, Heather just said...
No, for the something fun.
Yes. This hits two fronts. One, it recognizes Sharon Young, who has been here for, been principal at Alcott for 16 years, is that right?
15.
15, 16, a long time, and...
15 or 16.
Is a phenomenal educator and is retiring this year. And, but, you know, something that we talk about fairly regularly, which is our ability to include everybody in some of the things that we do, in this case specifically trips, and a scholarship fund to help defray the cost for kids whose families might not be able to, to afford some of these trips that we so adequately offer the students.
At the high school level.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm actually, Tracy Moranas here, so I'm going to invite her, since this is much of her brainchild.
Come join us.
I'll just follow up on Wally's comments a bit, but, you know, I think ever since my arrival almost two years ago, as I bring the international trips for approval, there's been an ongoing feedback to me, very frankly directive, I'm going to say. I never thought it was just feedback. I knew there was a pretty strong order to try to work on how we were going to make these trips more accessible to all. And I'm not saying this is the fix to all of that, but it sure is a big step forward because the challenge I've had, and Tracy's heard me say this because she was sitting on CEF all of last year, and that was one place I went for some interesting, for some help. We haven't had the vehicle, and I think that's much of what will be accomplished here, and funds, of course. And then to have this added benefit of, you know, really honoring a cherished principal who, in her way of operating, is so much in the mode of taking care of every child and making sure that every child has the same opportunities at Alcott, and she sits in the most diverse school that we have, and that has been her passion work for the last 15 years, and it just felt like a, you know, a great fit, and Tracy was willing to lead it, and she's here to tell you what she's been thinking and what we've talked on so far.
Okay, thank you. So I've been at Alcott since 2005, so my commitment to Sharon, and I'm still there, not waiting, no.
When you were going to school.
Sharon and I are both living together, so, and I think she's done such great work at Alcott and really needs to be recognized because it truly is a service and a gift to all of us, what she's done there. And what impresses me most about Sharon is she always puts the kids first, and that is the one thing when I approached her about this, because she really would prefer to retire with no fanfare, you know, she just wants to leave and walk away, and I've done my job, and Alcott is very much ready financially to just jump right in. You know, I think she's done the schedule, she's done everything. Everything is done for next year.
Yeah, not sure what Naomi's, no.
But we couldn't let her leave like that.
She's a great place.
She's a great place, and I just feel like Sharon needs to be recognized for 16 years at Alcott. And Sharon does love to travel, and so this seemed like a natural fit. And as, as I was on CEF, there were many years that we just kept on any approach for scholarships, and that's not part of what we do. So there really is, Laurie said, there's no vehicle for any of this. And I also happen to have kids all the way through the high school, one child has spent on a trip before, and the next one's going to Switzerland. And my commitment to my own kids is you get one trip, because it really is, you know, they cost between $2,000 and $5,000, as you know, and for most kids, they don't even see it as a possibility of something that's even, like, you know, they kind of write it off, and the trips come out, "Well, I could never go because I can't afford it or my parents can't afford it." So we want every child to have the same opportunity. And I do know that there is some fundraising done. I've talked a lot to Mr. Mistrullo, to Senior Obolpe, you know, and there's been a lot of fundraising done within the trips, but it's still not enough. We've sent a couple of kids, there have been some private donors that have sent a couple of kids on trips that you guys have never heard of, even Mr. Mistrullo hadn't heard of. So like, there's some under-the-radar help being given to kids, and I think we just need to formalize it and really develop a fund that can be sustainable. So at this point, for Sharon's retirement, she really didn't want a party, but she said yes to a fundraiser. If it was going to help kids, that's what she wanted. So we're going to invite all of you to come on May 23rd from 3:45 to 5 o'clock. We will be fundraising, should this be approved at that point. We've done some quiet fundraising before, so we do have some checks, and I've got that with Ian, and the district is going to hopefully hold the money, and they will provide an accounting to the committee that will disperse the funds. And what the kids will do is they'll apply for a scholarship, or there might be a guidance volunteer that knows that a kid wants to go on a trip, maybe a principal knows, a teacher, and it will all be confidential, there will not be parents on it, you know, it's definitely going to be managed by the high school. And I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like yet. Sharon would like to be involved, whether it's a letter that, you know, maybe they write a paragraph on how this will change their life, or maybe they don't, I don't know. So we're not really sure what it's going to look like, but we just want to start the fund.
I would just like to say thank you for coming up with this, because like Laurie said, it is, it's something that we have wanted to address for so many years. We've been talking about it and asking about it, and it's such a need, and it's such a wonderful way to pay tribute to Sharon at the same time. So just thank you for pulling all this, the ideas together into something real. It's great.
And in a certain way, it's another piece of the entire equity conversation in this town. So you see this primarily as benefiting individual students who apply. Was there any discussion of defraying costs for everybody?
So that happens within...
And I'm not advocating...
No, no, that happens within some of the trips. I've wondered a lot about the trip process through all of this. Like, for example, if you use a trip company, then that comes with a certain number of chaperones, so if your child is going on a trip, you're actually paying the chaperones to go, which I totally agree with, because any teacher that's willing to spend 10 days in a foreign country with a bunch of the children. So I think what, what happens is that, you know, certain companies allow you to bank that chaperone money, so they might recommend you take five chaperones, but maybe the school feels like free should come, and then you can bank some of the money for future trips within the companies. And you can negotiate. If everybody uses EF, for example, then you can negotiate the trip costs a little bit more. So it wasn't to defray it for everything because they're just, quite frankly, so expensive. We want to try and bank as much as we can and really give it to kids that travel will make a huge difference in their lives.
There will be limited resources in this fund. There are many people in the community. The mechanism built in this motion is to do everything by the sole discretion of the principal of the high school. That will actually mean that the principal of the high school, on top of everything he's doing, will have to start doing due diligence on tens of requests for funds. Is that the only possible mechanism?
So it would hopefully be a committee, so not just the principal, so it might be guidance, it will not be parents, though. I mean, I think the effort is...
That's not what the motion is saying.
Well, and Tracy didn't write the motion, we didn't...
So my question is to the administration.
Yeah, so because we don't have the process completely tight tonight, we're just asking for creation of the funds, you can either alter the motion to just establish the fund and we will bring you back the process, or the way we worded it was in the mindset of that it would be Mr. Mistrullo and designee, that kind of thing, but it's completely up to what wording in the motion you're comfortable with. We just drafted a starting point.
I personally think that in order to do a decent due diligence and not open the district to all kinds, any of them, to all kinds of claims and favoritism and stuff, there has to be somebody, a social worker, that will follow the regular protocol of financial aid.
Certainly.
And I would, I would ask you to come back with a...
Yeah, no, that's totally, totally appropriate.
And I think it begs the question, we really don't have, you know, I sent the superintendent, some, other districts have policies on financial aid, so that it's very clear to families what the process is and confidentiality, because I'm sure that's a huge concern and might prevent people from applying or seeking a scholarship. And, but I really want to thank you for this work. The one other issue I think it does bring forward is, let's say a family wouldn't qualify for the financial aid, but still this would be a huge, you know, $4,000, you know, would make it so that they couldn't do something else. So we might need to look at the accessibility, having some trips that weren't quite that expensive, you know, having more...
So I was going to offer that when we got to the approvals for the trips that are on for tonight. And I've had this feedback from all of you, prior members, new members... And I've had this feedback from all of you, prior members, new members, we're gonna do a big picture step back on just all elements of the high school, travel. There's so much great there, but right now, we don't have the systems in place that we really need to. And I think what I mean by that is a process of, okay, let's inventory them all, let's look at the cost range, let's look at the purpose and where they're going and why, and then look to see if we think the options are as flush as we want them to be and what needs to have. So I think that's a charge for Mr. Mistrullo and I to step back. And, you know, I will admit to some extent that in my almost two years here now, I feel like they are just planning coming at me, and I don't think we have that first stage of the process. And I think we need that piece, so we have a big picture view. It's an amazing amount of opportunities we offer our kids, so I think we want to not throw the baby in the bath water here. But I do see the need to step back, build a process, build a vetting system, make sure we have trips that are opportunities for all kids, and just do that big picture.
It's a big project. It's a big project.
It is.
I don't know what are the procedures here, but I would consider, I don't know how it goes, to actually create a subcommittee school of this regional for this, because it's many people, it's lots of money, we have to think how to involve med colleagues, how to create guidelines for our financial guidance.
So a subcommittee to run this process? The only thing I would want to be careful of is stepping over our boundaries of what administration should be doing.
Can I touch on this first? I do know that we would like to try and move this along tonight, so if you have trouble with the motion, or it's written, then please propose some line, which I think what we're hearing is that, you know, we will definitely take these things into account. And I'd like, before we go down the road of creating a subcommittee for this, I do think it's something that's been a lot of thought on. Let's see what comes back from the administration and, you know, recognizing that we all are thinking the same way, and we've talked about this a lot. David, I know you wanted to make a comment. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, it seems to me that there's three different issues, and should be clarity in how they interact. So from the little I know, which is just what's presented here, it sounds like a great idea, and I do agree as a parent, you know, that there's a lot of money in these trips, and not everybody can go with them, and then there's a peer issue and all that. But so first, it's fundraising, and I have to say, I don't know enough about the legality, and I might push that over to Jared, but there's certain specific rules about, I mean, parent-driven organizations like the CEF operate under a set of rules. And Christine, you may know more, and if you do, please chime in. But so there's a setup for a parent-led or citizen-led fundraising effort, and then how that money is transferred to the school, and how school then has oversight, and that's a building, a trip, you know, anything. And so we really need to understand that law, because there's certainly lots of regs about even things like revolving funds, where money comes in as fees and how it goes out. So I think before we get too far ahead, that needs to be understood. The second item is what you all mentioned, which is, now you've got the money, what's the process by which you, you know, oversee that? And how is that driven? And I think the third one, which was touched on over here, is, you know, to what degree should the school committee have oversight into that process? And, you know, again, I'm new to this committee, so I'm not clear on how you operate, but typically, yeah, I think we should understand that picture before going too far ahead. And again, you know, our practice in Carlisle is that we hear a concept in a meeting, and we generally don't vote on it in the same meeting. We deliberate, and we take our homework, we come back, and then we vote. So I don't know if you've already done this. Is this brand new, or is this an issue that's been coming around?
So the concept of this has been talked about. We have gotten kind of high-level updates on this proposal already. We tend to do the same thing, not as a rule for everything. There's certainly been things where we've said, oh, we have to bring it up tonight and discuss it and vote on the same night. Generally, we try to do the same thing, vote something later. This has been brought up in the past, so at least for those who have been here, if you're comfortable, I would feel comfortable, at least voting the creation of the funds tonight, even if we put off the details until later. Does that feel comfortable, even though the two of you have been here for it?
For me, and I wanted Tracy to apologize. I'm not yet, it's my first starting meeting, so I start with immediately meeting greedy in my criticism, but I should have started, I think it's a great idea. I'm very, very, I never guess not how to do it. I will learn in a few years, and I'll be politically correct.
And I just wanted to make another comment, just so you know that some of the other work that's being done is, the high school is now gathering all of their trip information, so it's all on one page on their website. You know, they're going, you know, they're going back a little bit, and they're creating, you know, pamphlets for parents. So at the beginning of the year, you know what your option of trips are gonna be for that year, so you can start to make some decisions. Or if a child really wants to go on the trip, they know it's cost $4,000, what am I gonna do to get there? We talked about establishing a fundraising club within the high school, so that the kids can learn how to fundraise their own money. And maybe their parents have the money to send them, but they don't want to send them. Kids can earn their way into a trip by, you know, working, volunteering, whatever it is, you know, even if it's an old-fashioned big sale, they can do that. So those are just some other things that have been discussed over the past, you know, I'd say, month or so. And so just, should this be approved, we will then, this committee will, and on the committee that we currently have, we will write an ed fund grant. They cannot fund scholarship, but they can contribute to a fund if it's established. And same with all of the banks in town, they all have charitable foundations. So the goal is to then write the grants to all the banks and have them continue to, you know, seed this and really make it happen, and make it something substantial that will continue on.
That's great. And then you were talking about, you're both mentioning, kind of putting more consolidated information about the trips out. I would assume at that point, with all of that information, and then when trips are announced, with it will go announcement or information about this fund that you can apply to, so that everybody knows, here's a trip, and you can apply.
That'll be part of the procedures we need to put together.
Right, exactly. I assume there's communication with.
Because right now, I'm like, as a parent, I'm trying to think back when my daughters both applied for trips, I'm not sure what I saw for, you know, I think there's a statement about, there is financial aid available.
Right.
And it's just a statement.
It's just a statement, right. But not much information about how would I go about looking into it.
So that's the big picture view that we need to do, and tightening the procedures up and all of that. And I'm gonna let Jared answer the revolving account question in a minute, but frankly, this fall, we were way back in insurance, stuff we just were fixing up and cleaning up and making sure everything was tight on some of those lower level, but incredibly important things. So there's just, there's a process here we need to really just tighten up and get in place, and that's the outward process. We've been cleaning some of the inward processes now, the outward needs to happen, and I take all that feedback, was, you know, I agree with all of it. So do you want to do?
So as you know about revolving funds, revolving funds can only be set up and collected for things that get specifically raised for. So we've had some communication back and forth, yourself and Ian. So the Alcott PTG, as you know, is a registered public charity, therefore they can fundraise, solicit donations that benefit the scholarship fund. All the donations to the Alcott PTG are tax deductible in the same way donations are made directly to the CCRSD. If the Alcott PTG.
CCRSD.
From Carlisle Regional School District.
If the Alcott PTG does solicit donations for the scholarship fund, then careful attention needs to be paid in regards to the phrasing used. The PTG must state the donation is being collected to benefit the CCRSD Sharon Young Scholarship Fund. Any solicitation needs to be clear that donated funds will be dispersed to the scholarship fund and not kept internally. At the same time, the solicitation needs to be made clear that the Alcott PTG is asking for and collecting the donation, not the CCRSD Scholarship Fund, which is different. So when they're collecting the funds, it needs to be made explicitly for the this particular fund. Then we will figure out some sort of process, but it will only be used for that particular reason.
Of course, it won't be only the Alcott PTG, it would have to be all the other.
Yeah, it started there, because that's been Tracy's liaison, and it's under Sharon, and it will evolve from the Alcott piece.
You use the high.
It's gonna be a regional scholarship.
And in any type of communication, it's always very clear that the donation will be made, you can write the check to Concord Carlisle Regional School District with the Sharon Young Scholarship Fund in the memo line. And Alcott also does accept online donations through PayPal, so we have a specific button that it literally, it will just be directed to that.
Thank you for doing all of this work.
Yes, it's great.
That's exciting. And I doubt, it may be premature, but has there been any consideration of sort of dollar figure that you're trying to reach?
I've heard a few from Tracy. I'm curious what she's trying to say.
I love a little fundraising. No, we're just gonna, we're just gonna do a great job on raising, and, you know, and hopefully some of the donations that we're soliciting, especially from foundations, if we can get a multi-year commitment. We do have, you know, some anonymous donors out there right now that will match funds that we possibly raise on that day of May 23rd, so if anyone's willing to contribute on that day, that might be helpful. But, you know, we hope you all come on that day and just really celebrate Sharon, because that really is what it is all about, but the fundraiser is how we got her here, because she really wants to go out with the sunset unnoticed.
Thank you, Tracy, for all the work, and I know it's one of your probably thousands of projects, after you got through the middle school play. But I would like to ask that we, I don't know if I make a motion and modify the motion to put aside how we disperse the funds.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest what it's like.
I would assume it's next fall.
In terms of.
Dispersing, oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're not trying to disperse any of the spring.
My goal would just be to be able to collect the funds.
Exactly. We just need to create a fund to collect it. I was just gonna suggest the same thing, if I make the motion and just take out the, at the discretion of the principal part. So try this one out. I will move on, oh, sorry.
Just still discussion, do we insert CCRSD, Jared?
Let me see, an option.
Part of this is IRS charitable giving consideration, part of it's 71E, and how they come together, is that correct?
Well, it's going to be the regional side as well, so I assume.
Oh, definitely. Yeah. So for pure clarity, absolutely put CCRSD in front.
And it's only the regional school committee that's voting on it.
Correct.
Okay, so I would move for the regional school committee to establish the CCRSD Sharon Young Travel Scholarship Fund. The Sharon Young Travel Scholarship Fund will be expended to support student participation in travel and exchange programs.
I second you.
Does that work? I took out the discretion.
It's not okay for purposes of.
Does that sound good legally and what we need and all?
So any discussion on this, on what we've had?
Yes, once again, thank you.
Yes, huge thanks.
All in favor? Both? That's it. Thank you.
Right, that's great. Thank you, Tracy. All right. So Christine, Joanna, and Bob, you've missed us so much. You want to come back and join our next discussion?
Oh, well, this is cozy. It's like a party. I love it. Okay, so the next thing on our list is superintendent evaluation. So we've invited back our past members, because of course, it's the members who have been a part of this district for the last year, will participate in the evaluation, but I think it's also really important that we're all here doing this, because this discussion, obviously, we should be consistent year to year, and so it carries forward for the next year as well. So this is great to have as a joint discussion. Let's see, last week, I sent out a bunch of information, and what I wanted to discuss today, actually, we didn't, I didn't print these out, which I guess I should have, but what I want to discuss today is the performance standards. So I had sent, not everybody has a laptop, I didn't think of that, sorry, this is my bad. But I will go through them. There are basically just four performance standards that we use, and those of us who've been here for the year have seen these. There are four standards that we use against the various metrics in the superintendent evaluation rubric. There's proficient, which is considered the goal for the four professionals, and that's the primary standard and the most common one that is used. It's considered completely, obviously, proficient, and what we're looking for and expecting. Then there's exemplary, and then there's needs improvement, and then there's unsatisfactory. So what I'm gonna do is, I sent out a DESI outline of this whole thing, but I will read through each one, and we don't even have to have anything in front of us, we can even just to go through these and make sure that we have a common understanding of what each of these means, so that as we go through the evaluation, we're all doing it in the same way. Does this all seem good to everybody? So this is from DESI, exemplary, sorry, proficient performance, which again, there are four standards, and I'm starting with number three, just because that's what they start with as the standard. Proficient performance is understood to be fully satisfactory for the superintendent and all other administrators, as well as teachers. This is the rigorous, expected level of performance. It is a demanding but attainable level of performance. So again, expected, demanding, but attainable. Exemplary performance represents a level of performance that exceeds the already high standard of proficient. A rating of exemplary is reserved for performance on an indicator or standard that is of such a high value that it could serve as a model for leaders regionally or statewide. Few educators, superintendents included, are expected to earn exemplary ratings on more than a handful of indicators. Okay, above and beyond. A rating of needs improvement represents performance that is below the requirements of a standard, but is not considered to be unsatisfactory at the time. Improvement is necessary and expected. For new educators, performance is on track to achieve proficiency within three years. An unsatisfactory performance is merited when, I don't think we're actually worried about this one, but I'm gonna read it just in case. Unsatisfactory, so we're covering all of these.
It's so awkward for me.
I know. That's why it was merited, when performance is not significantly improved, while your rating of needs improvement or performance is consistently below the requirements of a standard, and is considered inadequateable. All right, we'll put that one out there.
Have you seen under that?
What's that?
Have you seen under that?
No, no, that's it. I think the reason we wanted to go through this is partially because last year, we all got into a situation where we had some different lenses through which we were looking at all of these. I think one of the lines here that caught us up and became confusing was in the needs of improvement rating, where it says, for new educators, needs improvement is on track to achieve proficiency within three years. And I think that's where it can get confusing, and some people can look at it to say, oh, well, this means we're on track, and others can look at it in terms of the rest of the wording, which means it's, which says it's below the requirements of a standard. So I think that really, and then the proficient exemplary is where we want to make sure we focus here. I personally read these to say that exemplary is, sorry, obviously, exemplary is above and beyond, that proficient is what we're expecting, and that we're satisfied with everything that's going on, and that needs improvement, like it says, is below the requirements of a standard, and that that's somewhat disappointing. So I guess I wanted to kind of put that out there and see how everybody else feels about those definitions. We're not talking about Lori right now, we're just talking about definitions. Does that ring true?
I'm not just eager to review, but just to help me going forward for the next year.
Yeah.
And one thing I think is that nobody, at the end of the year, should be caught by surprise. It's a continuous feedback loop.
Exactly.
This is just sort of rolling it all up.
Confirmation.
Yes. And I think there's sometimes a notion that there's always room for improvement, so we're gonna, you know, keep things low, because we want somebody to, you know, do better. And I don't see that as the case. I think every year is a new year. I mean, of course, past, you know, if you've been in a district for a while, then you would want to obviously consider their past performance, but I just hope that that is what we're talking about, is we're not sort of saying, well, you know, this is a B, but this, you know, you could get a. well, you know, this is a B, but this, you know, you could get an A next year type of thing.
We're not creating a bell curve.
I think it's important to actually, for anybody that evaluates, to remember that it doesn't usually exclusive to be exemplary enters place for improvement. You know, Pablo Casas, at age 90, was asked, why is he still practicing? And he said, because I think I can get better.
Right.
So it's not usually exclusive.
Definitely a very good point.
Be exemplary in what we do.
And you can still get better.
Above expectation.
I think just to be sure that we all read the, what I found helpful, but I don't know that to keep us all aligned also, and I agree with everything that everyone said, is where Lori has highlighted her goals. Sorry, but you're who are evaluating. I want to say though, that you've done a really careful job of articulating what the goals will be. And in the actual document that you sent us, it's the superintendent, it says Lori Hunter's goals, it's on the actual sort of official document. It allows for you to read what a proficient rating means and exemplary rating means. And if we, if we're careful and we take the time to do it, ideally, we're all, you know, kind of basing it off the same kind of, you know, rating. And I think the concern last year was they actually, while meaning some of the same things, were actually pretty disparate ratings.
Right.
And trying to capture that as an overall helpful opportunity for feedback made it made difficult. So more than anything, we're trying to align on what you've already articulated is helpful. But I also found that very helpful as I started to look through it because we're looking at specific things. Lori isn't trying to do everything this year. She's made very clear goals and how has she done on those goals? And to be clear that that's what we're trying to be supportive of and, you know, and continue the feedback loop and all that.
And what Joanna's referencing is the rubric. That nobody can do everything on the rubric because it's like 137 different.
Yeah, just have that to you when you do the.
And so in that email that I sent out to this entire group, I think about a week ago, exactly a week ago, on May 7th, in case you're looking for it. I have the superintendent rubric that we get from the state, but also a version that's the superintendent rubric, El Hunter. And so that's where we've highlighted in green the specific rubric metrics that are a part of her goals for the past year that we all agreed on. And so that's how we can specifically look at her goals as they relate to the evaluation rubric. And like Joanna said, it lays out very clearly what is proficient, what is exemplary, et cetera.
And when I do it, I have them side by side.
Yeah.
So I can reference and then, you know, and so you're, if we're all doing that and I like, I really liked how you did that, I guess you highlighted whatever.
Thanks, Wally too.
Where to, you know, be able to align what we're, what we're actually rating, you know, what we're actually giving feedback on.
Okay, good.
And as you say, look at it as an opportunity. It's a great opportunity. Last year, I thought, having a conversation and all the things we hope for and as we learn and grow and where we want to go with the districts and, you know, it's really like, like everyone said, even in all the tributes and everything, it's like we're working and pushing in the same direction.
Yeah, it is a great opportunity for conversation, definitely. I'd be curious to hear from Carlyle members, both present, past and new and all. How, how you guys do it there in Carlyle and if it's any different? And was that when, you know, do you see things differently than we're kind of laying out here?
I'll answer because Eva hasn't gone through this before. So we've gone, I in particular have pushed back over the years at the mind numbing granularity of the rubric.
Yes, that's why we don't want to look at everything.
The superintendent who preceded Jim O'Shea loved the evidence-based approach. She was all about that. She had big ring binders with all sorts of.
We have been through that too.
Yeah, we didn't feel that that was particularly illuminating. So particularly in my case, I've been pushing for, you know, a broader view. We absolutely spent a lot of time in the summer sessions working on goals. Those goals drive the superintendent goals. We spend some sessions early, making sure the goals are lined up.
Yep.
And those goals flow down to the district and to the schools. Then mid-year, we do a check-in. We'll probably do that.
Yep.
And then as it wraps up in now, we really, you know, I mean, I'm, I spent my life in the corporate world and, you know, I feel we're a board of directors. As a board member, you know, if I don't trust the CEO, he shouldn't be, or she shouldn't be CEO. So that, you know, generally apply that same logic. I mean, you've hired a superintendent, you trust her. So the evidence is great that it's there, but it's not necessary. So really try to sit back on the high-level objectives.
Yep.
Now, you have to fill out the matrix.
Right.
So we do. But then those forms are sent to our secretary and she accumulates them and they're aggregated. And we, as individuals, just again, focus on the top level and give our closing comments. And that's pretty much helpful.
Okay. So that's what we've done similarly in terms of process, what we tend to do, obviously, we all fill it out. We tend to have one person collect it and then do a summative evaluation. So take all the comment, everybody writes individual comments.
So one person does the summative?
And one of us will read all of those.
All of them.
And do a sum, one or two. We have two chairs now, so Wally and I really will figure out how we're gonna evaluate. But, but, but we'll work on a summative evaluation that we can then lead when we.
Is this, are you doing the eval now or prepping for the?
No, no, we're just prepping for it now. We're just, this is, this is really just a conversation to make sure that we're all on the same page as we evaluate. Over last week and this week, we're each having individual meetings with Lori.
I have the surveys out, so I'll have that data too by the end of the week. So I'll inform you.
Great. We do, I don't know if you guys do this, but we started last year, we started a staff, a SAP, sorry, staff survey. And that's very.
Like a 360?
Yeah, yeah.
No, we don't do that.
So we'll have that data also.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're not going in the direction of too much data. But I think I did, I've had conversations with MASC and just like, just so you know this, you may know, you've been on EdCo roundtables with me.
Yep.
You really only have to evaluate on the teaching. What's the first one, professional? What's the first?
The teaching and learning, what's it called?
That's the only one you actually have to do.
Right.
If you don't like the other.
Instructional leadership, yeah.
If you don't like the other ones, you don't have to use them. You can pick up your own or have none. So just as a thought process, in the future, if you want to change it.
Right.
The school committee has a lot of flexibility about how it evaluates.
That's true.
Superintendents. But my, you know, my thought is just, and it's more like stream of consciousness for us for coming into the, the more time we spend on the goal setting.
Yes.
Early on, exactly.
Setting that up and getting it right and then like that.
That's the most important.
The rest of it, you know.
Just flows, absolutely. And I feel like over the last year, the way we've done this in Lori's superintendent reports have been very helpful because basically all of her reports feed into the goals and objectives that we all had set at the beginning of the year. And so we're getting updates, not just twice a year, but, but, you know, every two weeks on her goals. So that by the time we get to this time of the year and we're doing one-on-one meetings, I go in and say, okay, we've talked about a lot of this. There's not much to go through now, right? Which is the way it should be.
We've got the binder in our heads.
Right, we've been going through this binder, so to speak, all year. We know where we are in terms of all those goals. So it makes it not a big process at the end of the year because we've been doing it all the way through, which is the way it should be.
Just to David, I have the advantage of doing the EdCo last Friday, so it's, I can still remember. I think it's standard one and two has to be proficient in both of them.
Okay. So just back to kind of standards and how we use them. I, I guess I want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page because really, and I'm just gonna put it out there, last year, it was the needs improvement one that we all looked at differently. And some thought that meant, oh, that's not good. And some thought it meant, oh, that's fine, on the way to, on the way to good. And, and I want to make sure that we have a really consistent consensus on this. I, I see needs improvement as something that really is a statement that, oh, we're not happy with something and something needs to change. But, but I want to see how everybody else feels about that to make sure that we're clear and on the same page. Because I don't want us each coming in with different ratings to say the same thing or the same ratings to say different things.
So just to probe a little more, needs improvement, to your way of thinking, might mean a deficit that we didn't anticipate.
Right, exactly. That's an area where we're saying, oh, okay, this is something we need to be aware of because it's not going well. And this is, this is, again, not unsatisfactory, but not to our expectations, right? Whereas proficient, like, like you said, even exemplary or proficient can still have room for improvement, but be certainly considered proficient for this year or even exemplary. So that's, that's, that's my opinion. But I, this is why I wanted to have a whole discussion of this so that I, everybody gets to.
And I think we're just, as Dave was saying, we're just sharing our sort of free-form thinking about this, trying to come to clarity and consensus around it. I don't think that the, the needs improvement is taken out of context. To take it out of context is to take a September document and measure against that, not against real-world conditions that the superintendent encountered in the course of the year.
Right.
So I can imagine something that did not unfold as the superintendent or the school committee expected, and yet wouldn't rate a needs improvement because we take context into consideration. What happened that diverted attention to it?
Yeah, I think it's tweet, tweet. Have to remember that this is the superintendent evaluation and, you know, as opposed to say the district. Because there are things that you can attempt to do that for one reason or another don't pan out the way you expected. But, you know, we went into the approach with a uniform, with an agreement about how we were gonna do it. And if it doesn't, and if that doesn't necessarily mean that there was a deficiency in the superintendent's activities, it just didn't work out the way we had anticipated. And we'll come back at it. And versus you have something that you've committed to do and don't do it. You know, just for, you know, whatever reason.
Work or execute poorly.
But I, you know, again, I'm not evaluating Lori this cycle, but, and I am a hard grader, but I think that.
Fair party, right?
I want to push back on a Wally term about deficiency. It's not, I don't believe needs improvement indicates a deficiency, number one. And number two, as you mentioned Heather at the beginning, proficient is the gold standard.
Right.
So we, we tend, you know, we're all A, B, C, D people, right? So we say, oh, exemplary must be A. Proficient must be B.
Yeah.
So that means needs improvement is a C. Wow, C's bad, right? But I don't believe that's the case. I think exemplary is a very special category, as you pointed out, and you read the words. Use it very sparingly when it really means something. Proficient is the A. It is an A, which means needs improvement is a B. So I think from my experience over, you know, the years doing this, that's the mindset you should adopt. And that if there's something you want to highlight, and I don't think it matters actually, whether it's the district's failure or the individual, I don't even want to say that. The district didn't meet a goal or the individual didn't, she is the district, okay, for us, right? We aren't evaluating superintendents. We're not evaluating, you know, teachers. We're evaluating superintendent. She is the district. So my view is, I wouldn't be, you know, sloppy about using needs improvement, but I wouldn't be afraid of it if there's something that should be highlighted. And it's okay to be, you know, 3-2 or 5-2 or whatever. You don't have to all line up on that.
Right.
I think people can just have different opinions. And again, I'm not familiar with the process, whether the, the members are identified with each score by name or it's just aggregated. But it's important to note that maybe there were some things that some people felt could be, have been done different. That can be reflected in the comments. So that's my.
Yeah, I think, I think my concern would be, Heather, is that we, we don't want to divorce ourselves from new needs improvement.
Right, right. No, I don't want to make it sound like it's a.
Yeah. Because I think it should be used with the same care that Dave was saying exemplary should be used.
Yep.
But then again, I also, it shouldn't be a surprise.
Right.
I agree with everything when you say that. And once again, I think that not part of this evaluation process, but you wanted to get to a standard that we can use for years.
We can use, can we?
When you read the instructions before, they say, they were speaking about need improvement for young educators that can reach there for three years. You have to remember that you're actually evaluating, we're, I'm evaluating a superintendent. So when you put need improvement, it's a statement. So you have to, while not being careful of it, you should use it only when you want to make a statement. Because for a superintendent, need improvement is a statement, is a red flag. Use it as red flags.
I agree with that. Okay. Joanna, Bob, you think so much?
I think that's a very good point. Well, I agree with that too.
And I have a quick question. What's a good score for a superintendent? How many A's and how many B's?
You know, we often, hoping to be proficient. I mean, if you're gonna ask me, which I guess, I actually appreciate you did. The goal is proficient. So, you know, needs improvement is gonna catch my attention in a really big way because I want to be sure I'm addressing whatever it is. And I, I hope we'll, my hope would be I hear it early enough that I might correct it before it went to paper. And frankly, the public side of this is really a lot because other people may see the rate. And I'm not saying you don't do what you need to do, please do. But there is a place where it could get read in isolation because it's public and people just see the ratings and they haven't been part of all the other discussions. And I think that's among my colleagues and myself, that's the really heightened level of something going out that's got some negative to it, that it can just be grabbed publicly without the dial, rich dialogue I know you would all give me to make it a really productive conversation. And you know I want the feedback. I absolutely want the feedback and hope we never wait till the evaluation process for that feedback. So that's the anxiety that comes from this seat is the public view and the people that aren't all of you who may interpret it in a certain way. So all of us are looking for proficiency, just like we say to the teachers, that's their, that's what they're looking for. Right on through the whole cycle, which has all the same similar rubric, it's proficient that we're all aiming for. Yeah, needs improvement means, it is a bigger flag. I mean, it just, it is a bigger flag from our, our seat to, to have it named that way. Doesn't mean you shouldn't if it warrants it. I'm not at all saying that. Just stands out.
But, and I don't want to misspeak. I'm not talking about the summative, but, I mean.
Oh, you're talking about, you're talking about.
There's lots of little pieces.
There are lots of little pieces, right?
I'm not talking about the summative particularly. The summative generally, I completely agree, Lori.
Yeah.
But there are little pieces, if you're gonna use the little pieces.
They get pretty granular.
That's a, that's a good point. There's a difference. There are some really granular ones and then there are overall summative ratings.
Battery. I guess I've spoken too much.
Oh, you're done.
So speaking of granular, let's take a minute and distinguish highlighted green from not highlighted green. And we highlight green because as soon as everything's a priority, nothing's a priority.
Right.
So you have to prioritize. Nonetheless, I don't think Lori or the school committee is implying that the others are off limits.
No.
Because they're on your radar all the time also. Although, again, I don't think it's a different metric. I simply think it's a different priority and only that. So we're measuring in the same way, but measuring against a priority item or a non-priority item. Is that in keeping with?
Well, I do want to, I think when we did goals, we, we, the things that are highlighted were areas where we had goals. So, you know, we've had in the past, when we first started doing this, it was, I think the first year was like we had to do every single block. And one, it's D, it's two, it's really not reflective of what goes on during the course of the year. So what we, if you, if you remember back to when we set goals, we, we used this and So what we, if you remember back to when we set goals, we used this, and we, these are the things we're going to focus on. The other ones, you know, I would almost look at it like if there's something there that during the course of the year, something came up and it's in that space, I would file it away for the goals discussion for fiscal year 2020, rather than think, okay, well, I'm going to, you know, that came up and we didn't address it just right, and I'm going to go hard on that for some reason.
I wasn't implying hard, whereas, my question was more, are the things we're declaring are effectively off limits for this year's conversation because it's not highlighted? Or if we deem it useful, is it in play as a, as an item to have a conversation?
It's actually a good question, but it, because you have to rate all of those things, the way that form is. Right. You have to put a rating on everything, and yet we focused on, you know, handful of them really well, I would say, but the reality is, I can't, off the top of my head, something like, you know, the ones about the laws and the regulations, and, well, we're all responsible, Lori's responsible for those things, but they've not really been a priority goal. I think if you were feeling like something like that was concerning, that you'd have a conversation, and navigate that, you know, I just don't think they have the same weight as the other things, because we've chosen that.
Agreed, agreed.
To Dave's point of how to evaluate or how to approach the year has been synthesized down into more really meaty, you know, eight, or whatever the number is of the goals, and the other ones are important because that's your job, but they haven't been like things to really go after and dig deep in for whatever reason. I think weight is the most critical word that you just used, that those that we're focusing on are much more heavily weighted. Doesn't mean everything else is off limits, and if you see something else you want to mention, well, then mention it, maybe it becomes something we discuss, like Wally said, you know, for summer and future goals or something.
Or it's in your...
It's not like we're saying, right, you can't look at anything else, but the ones that we've highlighted, that we all decided together were the focus areas for the year, should be much more highly weighted. Does that...
Yeah. I'm putting the question out just to get more, more consensus around what this means and how we each approach it.
Does that, Lori?
Yeah, I mean, I think that does make sense, because that is where the big picture movement is going, and I guess that's probably the part that's hard for me to give you a clean answer on, because the big picture movement is all going to the goals, no question.
Right.
But that doesn't mean there isn't an awful lot of time and energy going into some of those ones we didn't highlight, different things in a given year, more than others. So I think there's, it's a hard one to give you a black and white answer to, so I think, you know, use your discretion and your judgment. So much of this is just about the communication of it, and making sure, and this is why we're having the conversation, to make sure that I know what feedback I'm getting when I get the feedback, and that part got a little confusing last year, so we spent more time after the... We're trying to do it on this side of the conversation, rather than afterwards, like we did last year, so I'm so grateful you're even processing all this. There aren't simple answers, I think, is part of the other...
Right, right, I know.
From me, to what Your Honor said, there is a forum, and I don't know if you have to actually, if you actually have to create each line, but it will be a viable discussion if we try to check 140 points. Each district has to decide what for this year, or for this stage of the district are the most important thing for the district, you have to agree on it, you know, and practically discuss only those, unless somebody will come and say there is a red flag. But otherwise, choose what's important this coming year, or the last year, to the district, and analyze only the things that are priority, otherwise you will never be able to see a family, which I think is a problem, it's an important goal after you.
I was making it earlier, yeah. No, I agree, and I think that's the individuality of them, too. If someone feels like, I just don't want to fill out that one, check the box for that one, we had no experience, or we had one and it was not representative, I think that's the individuality of it, and, because overall, we just want to be aligned to sort of like good feedback and good conversation around the things that we really all tried to do the work with.
That's really the objective.
Yeah, that's right.
Don't oversay that, and it's kind of disingenuous in a way, desolate, I think, puts us out, right?
Yeah.
To, you know, on one hand, as I said earlier, the school committees are, you know, guiding boards, and should really not be that granular, and yet they give you this form agenda, you know, just like, and so that was, I didn't articulate it as well, and I don't have a form in front of me, so I was doing it for memory, but, I mean, that was really what we were pushing back against, and so we have, I think, winnowed down the form, Carlisle, to just the things we want to do, we only spit out the things that we want.
Right. Okay. So does that, does that feel like a pretty common understanding now, where we are?
Yeah, thank you.
Does that feel fair, really? Okay. Then, process wise, we'll be going, I mean, I'm not going to go through the detailed timeline now, but we all have it, and I think, oops, maybe I should open it up, but our, we're all finishing up our meetings with Lori, and we will fill in our individual evaluations, and I think the deadline to get them back to Wally and myself is the 28th, if I remember off the top of my head, because then we are going to present, we will do a summative, I'm pretty sure it's 28th, we'll do a summative, and then we present the evaluation on the 11th, June 11th. So if there are any other questions, just reach out.
I think that means a few are coming back again.
Yeah, that's right.
If you don't get them in by the 28th, it'll be a needs improvement.
That's satisfactory.
Right.
So if you get them in early, does that mean we're all simple?
Sure.
We're all you overachievers, yes.
Yeah, I just want to personally say how grateful I am for the conversation, because I think we want this to be a valuable process, and one that I do get the feedback that you, that I need, so I appreciate the conversation.
I haven't done it before.
Okay, good, I'm glad. You're welcome. Thank you all for coming back and then staying, even after we appreciated you, and then kept you here for another hour. You can go home to your families now.
Yeah, there you go.
Exactly.
Can I offer that we take a five-minute break?
Yes. Okay, let's do that quickly, thanks. All right, back here in, it's 8:23, back here in five minutes, 8:28.
The next item is the school committee meeting dates. We have put joint on here across the board. We're gonna go.
We're missing one.
So our expectation is not that every meeting will be joint. But we want, we've run into issues in the past where we set these dates and, you know, everybody from Concord obviously puts them in their calendar and then, you know, we've got a CPS meeting on November 19th and it turns out it would be really helpful to do a joint meeting. And so our thinking here was that if you could just, you know, put a pencil in on the dates that aren't CPS or aren't joint, so that if that eventuality comes, we've got a date that may be ready for prime time.
I really want to push back on that point. It's incredibly burdensome for us to make three meetings a month. We have our own meetings, very long meetings once a month. I know that we've morphed, I think it's changed over time, to the accommodating Concord and going twice down here, but I'm really against that. And I'm against it for three different reasons, I would say. Number one, as I said, it's very burdensome and we have a hard enough time getting members to join our committee and getting them to join the region, and that's a big reason why. Number two, and I realize, you know, the next few meetings are going to be sort of a mashup, but I really feel we need to be a little more disciplined about covering region stuff with region and K through eight with K through eight, even to the point of the evaluations. I mean, it's, you know, because we are the, it's easier for you guys because it's all one district basically in your eyes, but it's definitely not one district in our eyes. So that's the second reason. I'm not against at all the notion that with a high school and the complexity that in two weeks there might be issues. And so I'm certainly, from my view, I'm certainly open to, you know, on short notice, there's only two of us and we would maybe pencil in that we could be called, but I'd much rather see us approach it the other way and say, these are the regional dates and only if we really have to, we'll call, we'll call you in for a very specific piece of time on the other dates and then we'll make sure that we're available. And, you know, to Lori's point, she's made it, you know, there's a lot of reach out in one-on-one, there's, you know, no reason why we can't at least cover from a knowledge perspective the things that have to happen between meetings. So that's personally what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I don't, I think we're really pretty much on the same page. The point of, the way we, the reason we did this was so, and it, I think, what I'm thinking is that you, we've got these, you have marked down that we'll come back at the next meeting with a list of joint and CPS. The expectation was not that every meeting was going to be joint. It was just that the recognition is there that there's a meeting and if something does arise, then we will, you know, the hope will be that, you know, obviously if you've got to schedule something on that day and that it was a CPS meeting, then we, you know, we'll have to find another date to do the business we have to do.
Yeah, it's not, well, it's not so much, we'll, we'll mark the calendars. I mean, I'm speaking for Evan, but I will certainly mark my calendar and not schedule something. I'm saying, I'd like to see it posted, joint versus CPS. I'd like to start from the mindset that the first meeting of the month or the middle one, whatever it is, that's the, that's the regional meeting. And so just a more of an internal discipline to say, unless we really have to, we don't want to slide agenda items into that secondary, another region.
Right, and we will, and in the past, that's what we've, that's what we've attempted to do. There will be, and I think, why don't we plan to work on this between now and the next meeting?
Okay.
And because there are some of these meetings that get near decision points on budgets and that kind of thing, where we know we need two meetings.
That's okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that's evenly fair as you move to budgets or, and there's lots of, there're going to be lots of subcommittee meetings on top of this.
Right. So why don't we plan to time between now and the next meeting to sit down the three of us together and determine which ones are going to be CPS and which only ones will be joint. But it was really as much to sort of highlight that notion that, because we have had, sometimes when we really had something that came up and had to be done and it was really hard to find a date because, you know, and for obvious reasons, you just had, you didn't even bother, once you'd put your own meetings down, to consider that, you know, that was there. So it's up in the event that we need it. Hopefully we won't. And we'll identify the ones we know we'll need throughout the year to have a joint meeting every two weeks, but they're far and few between.
Okay. And I mean, if we have to have that, maybe also we can be, take a sharp pencil to the agenda and make sure, you know, the region starts, we cover the regional issues.
We usually are better than we are tonight.
This one's hard to do that way because we had to do the executive session at the end anyway because of the seating committee. Typically, we, we have, when we do have, especially one of those, well, on all of the agendas, but especially on one that's been called that was not a joint meeting, at the outset of the schedule, to make sure whatever it is, it's done and you guys are out of here.
And even if we have to conduct K8 business at a joint meeting, we will try to structure it.
Try to do it.
We try to set the agenda.
You dismiss the region.
Dismiss the region, then we continue.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Also, just another point to throw out there, part of the reason we've been, we made more of the meetings joint last year was actually some feedback from Carlisle members that there was discomfort that sometimes things were coming up in our K8 discussions that would affect the region or affect the high school. And, and we also don't want to, we don't want to exclude you from discussions either that could affect, so when things come up, just because of the fact that obviously K8 could affect things at the high school sometimes, some things like that were coming up and we were realizing, okay, even though it's something that might be a primarily K8 discussion, the Carlisle members wanted to be there and understand it because it could affect something at the region. So sometimes those things, in this past year at least, we started to move more into joint meetings than into CPS meetings for their benefit. But again, that's, that's stuff that we can take feedback from you guys on and see where.
Yeah, maybe each group is different.
You'd rather it.
Evan has to go through it, she's just started.
Exactly.
So I can't, you know, but speaking for me, I'm happy to be informed.
Okay, got it. Well, that's good to know. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's important feedback too, because we can, we can tailor it to the way, what you guys want. Right, exactly. And as we understand that more, we can, we can work around it.
So does that work that we, we've identified these dates? We'll, we'll come back with another one that's joint and, you know, joint days, CPS days, and we'll work on those together? So there's no surprises there?
May I refer to the specific dates? May I refer to some specific dates? I don't know how Sydney's told the Tuesday is, but October 1st would probably be nice to move it to the 2nd if possible.
Oh, is that the one that's?
October 1st is the Jewish New Year. So I've checked the hard falls on both Jewish holidays, the main ones, and Muslim holidays. I didn't check all the others, so we don't have any problem. It did fit in Al Ha, and the 1st could move to the 2nd, that would make.
So October 1st is the only day that you recognize.
I only caution you that we don't know when the middle school building committee is going to meet, and it could be Wednesdays.
Right, what day of the week?
It's not, it's, it will be a comfortable solution, but it's not totally necessary because it will be after the holiday goes, I mean.
What if you move it a week?
That would be much worse. The ends is your keep.
That's why we moved it.
Double, double worse.
Oh, because that's what it originally was. It was region, and we moved it back.
It will be courtesy, but it's not necessary because it's the end of the holiday, so.
Well, we'll consider that when we're coming up with the second version of this. Any other dates that?
Personally, if they, because there is between the 1st and the 15th, there are two weeks, and then the 15th to the 5th, there are three. If we can move the 15th to the 22nd, that would be very nice for me because I'll be able to attend.
This is October 1st.
That's October. I will not be able to attend the 15th, and it's actually another workshop, but not a major one, and the 22nd I will be able to attend. And because there are, it's three weeks either here or there, that will be my, but it's, you know.
Then it's still be. Then it's still be two weeks until the November.
Yeah. June 23rd is after the year ends.
Yeah.
That.
Hopefully.
Yeah, but it creates, maybe because it's the last one, why not do it a week before?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, we did that for this year and I think we shouldn't put that a week earlier.
And this coming July, I don't know if, because it's vacation, if you can do it earlier in the day.
We, it's open for discussion, but.
It isn't.
We, we, our feeling is because of the building process, we should at least have a CPS meeting planned in July, a date.
No, no, I mean, earlier in the day.
Yeah, no, and we, and one of the reasons that this is, doesn't have a day in it is, and maybe the way to do this is if you can, I'm gonna, is this the one I'm sending?
You were gonna send it.
Yeah, you're gonna get a doodle poll about July and August.
Oh, okay.
And, so the, what we've been, what we've found is late August is typically when we get the joint workshop done because so many people are around doing different things. But, so the, that'll be heavily weighted in there. I will send out, you know, it'll, it'll probably end up being, you know, a couple of days during the two or three weeks of July after the 4th. And just, you know, put in what works and we'll try to identify a date that works the best. And I think there's really no reason for that to be a regional piece, that's just CPS, July.
Yeah, the only question is if we've got action items or bills or something like that, but I think we're probably fine.
If we have something, then, you know, maybe that's, and some of these things where there's, you know, one little thing that needs to get done and we need to convene the regional meeting, we only need one member from Carlisle. So, you know, and that's oftentimes the way the conversation goes, it's like, I can't come, I got something, but Evan can come, so.
And after the first attempt last time of Skype, I met with the IT director and we actually worked out and probably the next time would be better. And we checked the legalities, I think we did as well, and while somebody who is on Skype cannot be part of a quorum, he can vote and he can participate, so.
You have to have a quorum to open the meeting.
Correct, yeah.
They can join and they can, then they can.
Precisely. So they, they used it, we have to, I'll, I'll at least try it a couple of times, I'm not here.
Do, when you were looking at, do we need as a committee to vote that we allow that?
No, it's actually a town seat. If the town allows.
The region had to vote, the region will have, the, the region will have to vote.
We're not under the town office.
Town has to vote participation policy.
Okay, so why don't we, when we do, when we bring this back, we'll put that on the, on the agenda as well.
And the region, do you need a quorum of Carlileans or?
Yes, you need at least four.
Three Concord and one Carlisle.
Carlilean, great, I would use that.
Actually, I think we can do it, we can do two Concord and two Carlisle.
Yeah, you have to have, you have to have at least four with at least one Carlisle, right? So it has to.
But we can't conduct Concord.
And a quick question.
It would just be a joint, if you were, that would typically be a, a meeting that nobody had scheduled. We had something we had to do and we could only get four people.
The upcoming June 18th pending, scheduled meeting at 6:30, that's this upcoming.
That's this upcoming June 18th, yes. She's asking about that one, which we have on her calendar, and at this point, because we, we had moved it earlier from a week later, figuring, well, that'll be while school's in session still. And it's not. However, we're getting a lot of our work into the 11th. Basically, it's out there right now, I, don't cancel it yet, don't take it off your calendar, but if we don't have anything we have to do, we won't hold, we won't hold the meeting. So we're just going to see if we can get everything done by the 11th and not have to have that meeting.
That's where I will, I will be.
You can't be here, okay, that's good.
All of our motivation is to get everything done.
And nor would you. David, can you be here the 18th? Okay, so if we need to have a short regional meeting for some reason, we can at least.
Remote participants, the one coming is Tuesday.
The 11th is not, okay.
And the 11th originally was CPS, it's now a joint, is that accurate?
Yes. Right, so that we could try to, that's, because that's when we're doing evaluation.
In hopes of not.
In hopes of not needing the 18th at all.
So I think the other thing to mention, for those of you who lead such fabulous lives that you're scheduled out into these months in 2020.
Said, what he, after he came back from Norway.
Please let us know if any of these dates don't work for one reason or another. Let us know now and, you know, especially if it ends up being two or three people, we'll probably try to move that date. Okay. So we.
Another version will come.
Clear on this, another version will come. We'll set up the time that four of us can get together and talk about that and.
Yep, good. And then we'll get dates for July and August. And August is, is typically a workshop where we talk about our goals for the year and objectives and.
I don't know about you guys, but in our summer meeting, a chair buys them.
Oh. In our suffice chairs.
You made a motion.
It's a policy.
Right.
Okay.
The list of committee representatives, which, we're just going to go through, we're not appointing committee representatives tonight. We thought it was better to go through the list, edit it, we have some additions that I neglected to send from Cynthia Delores, so that's my fault, but we have some additions, some suggestions, some things to cross off, so we want to just go through the list, finalize it, make sure everybody understands what each one is.
Sure.
And then, over the next week, if each of you can send, you know, your preferences and that kind of stuff to us, to Wally and myself, we will start to slot in what makes sense in terms of, in terms of committees and representatives.
And whether they be day or night.
I was going to say, it's good to get some general preferences too, I would love to hear from everyone, you know, for some people it's easier evenings, others it's easier daytime, and we try to balance that out so we get what everybody needs. So let's just go through the list first and kind of explain what they are. You want to go through or you want me to?
Well, if I get hung up, I'll ask you, but Adolphian Community, and actually Court probably got to talk about this.
Yeah.
Because.
This is an advisory committee only, works primarily with the, with the community education director. These are three-year appointments to this board, appointments by the school committee, the regional school committee.
Right.
And as the name, I guess it doesn't say, it's not a board, it's an advisory committee, to be precise. And I believe it, it was meeting in late afternoons, I'm not sure when it was.
When I was a liaison, it was meeting at 11 o'clock in the morning or something like that.
That was more recent, okay, got it, okay.
So I don't know who the.
And Christine was the liaison last year.
I think it was, yeah.
So that one will need to be filled.
Yeah, but that is a daytime meeting.
That's a daytime meeting, I can do that.
Edco Advisory is the Edco Education Collaborative, it's, the meetings are in Burlington.
Bedford.
Bedford.
Yeah.
Almost Burlington. If you drive over there, you'll say, this isn't in Bedford, what are you talking about? The, it's a daytime meeting, it's once a month and typically once a month. And, you know, I, I think they're very informative, it's an opportunity to go talk to other folks from committees around, that are in this collaborative about the things that are, are going on in their neighborhoods and, you know, comes back with some good ideas. Some of them are a little more training-like, but, you know, for the most part, it's, there's a topic or two and a discussion about them, the topics I think are generated through interaction.
You mean, it's a roundtable, right? I'm talking about the roundtable.
It's a roundtable, yeah, yeah.
But isn't there a different, there are roundtables and then there's advisory boards.
You're always welcome to go to the roundtable and I encourage you to do so. This is actually, I sit on the board of directors as a voting member, there's also school committee representation who serve as advisory and we all sit together. And each district does it a little bit differently, there are some districts that really are only represented by their school committees, that's never been Concord, Concord, Carlisle or Carlisle even for that. And then there's other districts that have both, and then there's some districts which Jim and I have pretty much fallen in, that we're, the superintendent is there as representation and there hasn't been as much regular school committee participation. It really is another business meeting like this for Edco. With all of their business work, the collaborative and all the work that they're doing in the different ways they operate and policy decisions and things like that. And it's typically every other month on Thursday mornings at 9:30. So I think it's one that you can assign someone to, it's one I'm already covering, I'm very good about going, and so I think it's, I think it's your decision if that's where you want to put your time. You should appoint someone, for sure, but the roundtables, that huge benefit of your time, this is going to become, sit through another business meeting.
Okay, that's good to know, that's helpful.
Yeah, for new members, and I've told, you know, my committee, the roundtable's pretty useful, but they'll set the agenda, it's not on this list, but they'll set the agenda in the first meeting of the fall, October usually, and they'll decide as a group what they want to focus on. And it's great for new members to get feedback from other districts, especially the big districts, you know, really interesting stuff.
Goes to the chairs of the committee, correct? Because I don't usually send, they usually ask me for the chairs and then it goes to that, for the roundtable, that doesn't usually change.
Can you link us, can you send us?
Yeah, we'll be sure you get it.
Oh yeah, in fact, the next time I get an Edco email, I can forward it to everyone.
Yeah, I'm not on that distribution, it really only goes to.
I can forward it to you and then you need to just sign up, you know, email them back and say, can you add me to this list?
Right.
So next time I get one from them, I'll just forward it on. Go ahead.
FinCom for the observer, that's basically going to FinCom meetings, and.
And that's, actually, just, sorry, I jumped in. We'll need one for Concord and one for Carlisle FinCom, so it's two different FinComs, yeah.
And the meetings this time of year are about once a month, but you, if you're the observer to this, when we get into budget season, it's pretty much weekly. So we can, you know, on any, especially the observer positions, I think it's important to try to make an effort to go. Ideally, that consistency is important. If you can't go, I would ask that we, this year, try to line somebody else up to go and that we be willing to share in this. Because it can get to be, you know, we, we have a lot of meetings ourselves, these are a lot of meetings that the select board can meet every week through various periods of the, of the year. If they're like us, they're going to meet every two weeks and they can be long meetings. So what we've tried in the past is splitting up the, the two chairs, alternate the select board, that hasn't worked particularly well, so I think we, we, but I think for the select board, it probably would make sense to have a rotating approach among two people. We might even want to do that with FinCom, but those two in particular, we want to make sure we're trying to get to. Because it's an early read for us on things that are going on in the community that might affect us, and it's an early read on how the FinCom is thinking about things. And it also can be helpful and you need to be prepared for this, for the observer, sometimes you'll be, you know, asked a question. And, you know, you're at that point speaking for the committee, and so you kind of need to be up to speed on what's going on that they might care about, so. So that's that one. The PEG Advisory Board, the CCTV Advisory Board no longer. Now it's the PEG Advisory Board, and that's the, actually, I'm going to turn that over to Court.
This is a select board advisory board with a school committee member, and it typically meets monthly, Wednesday mornings, present time, looks at how the resources being used, what the funding implications are, present and future, and certainly lots of opportunity to look for the school tie-ins with community television. I get it, Carla?
I think we change Wednesday evenings perhaps.
Okay, so, got it, thank you.
That's good to know, thank you.
So Policy Subcommittee, where, where are we on going through the policies?
We took a hiatus on the policies for a couple of reasons, as people who were supporting me and Mary weren't available, so we're not that far from done, we're in the thick, Court's been there this year, we're in the thick of the big student section and then we have Section I to do after that. My concern is that the process started five years ago and I'm pretty sure we're going to have to look back, so it's going to be a year-long commitment. I had some great momentum going and then I lost it. So as a committee, I think we have to decide what the goal is for next year, certainly the goal is to finish getting all the way through. I think then we need to talk on what the next steps are and figure out what our sustainable cycle is so that we're staying current. I know David and I talked about Carlisle trying different things, I haven't been, met a school committee yet or just got this totally figured out, so I think the subcommittee model is an effective model, so let's appoint people and then the committee can work, can figure out what to do with it.
And that typically meets once a month.
Yeah, we were really basing it on the availability of people who were coming during the day usually, get our calendars out and sometimes once a month, we were trying for twice for a while.
The sheer number of policies suggests this thing, this committee's not going to go away.
No, I think it's a standard.
And my surprise was the black and white clarity of a singular policy was never black and white as soon as we looked at how it connected with others and then suddenly the work was pretty, pretty time-consuming.
Yeah.
So, okay, we talked about the select board.
Why don't you know the.
Youth Advisory Council.
Is that still active?
CZAP, we're crossing out, just went to.
It still exists, but they're not particularly active.
Youth Advisory Council?
This was, this was.
Oh, 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 I see, okay.
Youth Advisory was a town.
Right. I don't know that they are, I'll double, I'll find out, I don't think, I'll confirm. We also use services coordinator position.
Exactly, yeah, it's sort of dormant, we'll have to check it.
So three or four years ago, I think it was three years ago, we formed, the town formed the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, and the purpose is to, to sort of accept and reflect on the, on the town financials, the enterprise funds, and the schools. Schools came to it a year after it started. I have been on that since it started. I, we have to be, we have to appoint somebody to it and then you, you know, you get appointed, you even have to get sworn in.
Is that the Youth Advisory Council?
No, no, the Financial Audit Advisory.
Financial Audit, the FAC, that's what I refer to. The, I was hoping to hand that off to Bob, so, but somebody.
Well, typically, when they meet, it's in the.
It's a morning, usually it's, I think it's 8 o'clock, typically it's an hour and a half. It's not a heavy lift, it's once, it's four times a year basically.
Yeah.
It's a worthwhile endeavor.
Is this select board driven?
Yep. Mike has been the chair of it, Mike Lawson's been the chair of it since it started. Both he and I are off, our committees. Both he and I are off, our committees at the end of the year, so I think we should probably think about having somebody new go to that this year. So I'll be thinking about that. The Legal Women Voters Education Committee, I've never served on that.
That tends to meet once a month. They have an education committee that's, regular attendees tend to be between five and eight people and discuss various educational things. Good, interesting discussions happen there. It's been a great experience, actually, being part of it this year.
Comprehensiveness Long Range Planning Committee is no longer. That's been disbanded or just a long-range plan. Last year, CPAC is, that's an important committee to participate in. For those who don't know the history of this, our CPAC actually sort of lapsed for a while and then I think the first year I was on the committee, it got resurrected. Worth mentioning that there are a number of these sorts of parent council-type groups that are struggling with finding members. So I have taken, whenever I get a chance to say something to somebody who has an axe to grind in either a school or CPAC that, you know, think about volunteering, I think it's something we'll probably mention from here to the television audience. But PTGs, CPAC, they're off. We had our meeting with them Monday and everybody is...
Chairs report.
Everybody is struggling with having members, so.
It's a public announcement, your PTGs need you.
Yep. So that's what CPAC is.
Differentiate between regional CPAC. Is it Concord or regional?
No, the CPAC actually supports both.
Right.
And Legal Women Voters?
That's a Concord-Carlyle.
So it's regional as well?
It's regional as well, exactly.
The organization is Concord-Carlyle.
Right, exactly. CPAC supports both. Their official name is the Concord and Concord-Carlyle Special Education Period Advisory Council. So it supports both.
And the Financial Audit Advisory?
Concord.
That's just what I was going to say.
When does CPAC typically meet?
Daytime.
Alternating, sometimes daytime, sometimes evening.
Have they even set that?
What's that?
Have they even set that yet?
I don't, I haven't seen a schedule for next year. In the past, the meetings have alternated between morning and evening.
I think their current chair is...
Carol Yell is their current chair.
So Carlyle, or Selectmen Finance Observer. Do you have somebody from your committee who does observer?
Not really. We, first of all, the committees are run differently. I mean, we don't, we wouldn't show up to those meetings unless we were on the agenda particularly. We might do advocacy, not in the regular meeting. I think more importantly, and not mentioned here, but, you know, is the budget process internally.
Right.
And once that's set, socializing that. It's really the, the way that they run those meetings, there's not, there's not typically the opportunity to socialize it in the meeting unless you're on the agenda.
Correct, I agree with you.
And there's not, and there's not a lot you're going to learn about all the minutiae that they work with that's going to be helpful to you. So I heard what you said, but for us, we would never spend time on that. We would spend our effort making sure we have a good budget and working with...
And getting on the agenda.
Particularly the CPAC, well, before you get on the agenda. You know, make sure that they're part of the process and that they understand what's going on and if there are particular challenges, then yes, ask to be on the agenda to prep those challenges. I mean, BLS I can't really speak to, or you call it the select board, we call it Board of Selectmen, but because they cover so much stuff. The CPAC has a defined schedule and so you know when stuff's coming out. So you need to advocate before guideline because you don't want to get surprised by a bad guideline, because that's a bad place to be. Right? You really want to socialize what you need.
Before the guideline.
Before the guideline. So that's point one. If you do that well, then you've got another inevitable round where they're looking to cut and January or February, then you've got to be part of that. So there's, there's active periods, but generally speaking, it's not a regular set.
But I think we've got, we've started, I agree with everything you just said, I think we started at a nice cycle with the Carlyle leadership of meeting with them before the guideline and they're always questioning when Concord's doing things too. So we're, before the guideline, both places, go back after the guideline starts to come out over here, you know, I think we actually are starting to get a nice flow.
There is, I want to use this opportunity to pitch something that we used to do in the old days and I've been trying to bug our town manager to resuscitate and I don't think there's been a reception at the Concord level, but a chairs meeting and I don't need a big...
We've talked about it here, you're completely right.
But you're getting the chairs of Carlyle, CPAC, Carlyle Selectmen, you know, us guys, blah, blah, blah. And, and not the chairs of, you know, the RecCon, I mean, not just the chairs that really matter. Get that going early.
Yeah.
Because one thing that I've observed, and this is a Carlyle observation more, but the alignment between like Carlyle, so Carlyle-FAC and Concord-FAC hasn't been very good lately.
Right, right.
And this whole idea that you'd come up with one number, it's not good. It's not good. They should be all moving towards the same objective and when the guideline comes out or when the budget comes out, there shouldn't be asymmetry between the view of the two boards. I mean, we're the minority and so we can't really do much anyway, but other than be amused by the, you know, antics that go on south of us.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
So really, you know, to me, it needs to be re-functionalized and my suggestion, and most of you, I think, know this, but I was on Carlyle-FAC for nine years before I was on education board. So, I mean, I've got a lot of, I'm speaking from years of experience and I'll just give you one anecdote, which is, in '08, when it was the bad time and we really didn't have any money, my daughter, who's going to go to high school next year, was like three, cute as a button. I would actually bring her, I went to all the Concord-FAC meetings to advocate and I had nothing to go on because they could tell me to go. I'd bring her just because she was so, they were tense meetings and she was so, like, cute. People would like, "Gah," you know, so...
It'd work?
Yeah, well, it sort of worked, but my point is that...
On the third...
Everybody, find a cute kid and bring him to the FAC.
But we were working hard in those days because we had to, to try to line everybody up so that whatever the increase was, you know, it was already pre-socialized both ways and we would have, we were also planning on building at that point the school building and so there was a need to get together, but, you know, it was really, I felt it was helpful and I would be happy if we could re-iterate that.
It started to get some momentum this budget cycle. I think it never got to execution, so I think we should bring it back up because...
That would be more useful than sending somebody to the CPAC.
Okay, that's great then. Basically, this is here for whatever needs to be done, you know, as liaisons to the Carlyle powers that be. And then the CMS School Building Committee.
Yeah. And, and I expect it's...
Future.
CMS. I think we're leaning toward, we now have two slots for school committee.
Yes, we now have two slots officially.
Which is great because it's tied to that as one.
Yeah.
And so thank you to the select board for that.
Yes.
And we're thanking Heather and Court.
So this one, actually, I said we weren't going to choose, but this one we need to choose tonight to let the select board know because they want to finish nominating members. So this one, I...
Do we know anything about scheduling, however?
We don't know about scheduling yet.
I'm going to bet it's Wednesday.
I wouldn't be surprised if it would be Wednesdays because Monday's select board, Tuesday's school committee and Thursday's FAC.
So we proceed.
So I would make a motion...
But who knows?
I'd make a motion that we appoint Abbott and Court Booth as our representatives to the CMS School Building Committee.
Second.
Any discussion?
Happy to do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you. Thank you for everything you've done so far. It's just getting started.
Right. Oh, wait, I have to take that motion. That's only a motion. I would take a motion to...
Well, I made a motion.
Oh, you know, you've been nominated. Is there a second? Oh, yeah, a second. Everybody, all in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's going to be like that, huh?
Yeah. Go stepping on my turf.
All right, we've got more.
Yes. So there are things to add here. So one thing before we get to that, I just want to make sure Budget Subcommittee is something else?
Yes.
That we created last year, it was very successful, so that's on here.
Who participated in that?
What's that?
Who were the members last year?
Heather and I.
And Christine.
Christine. So an ideal, I think that's a good mix.
Yeah, it was good to have...
Two Concord and one Carlyle.
Two Concord and one Carlyle.
Just a question because we ran into the, you know, the open meeting law with regard to subcommittees, right? Because we, I personally did it because I created, inadvertently created a subcommittee, which I have to back away from.
Oh, great, because then you have a quorum of your school committee.
No, it's not a quorum.
It's just open meeting.
Anything with two is an open meeting.
And these are open.
And how do you do that?
We post them and we run them as open meetings.
But how do you run a budget process in open meeting? That's the thing I...
It's fun.
I mean, is that the way you want to do it?
It was a learning process.
Is that the way you want to do it?
So it's a very good question.
It is a good question.
We had a lot of discussion about this because you're right, all of a sudden, you can't, you can't do all the, you can't be completely in the weeds constantly in an open meeting. That can't be the only way that you're working on the budget. However, it became a very useful vehicle to kind of do more regular and public updates on what was going on with the budget. It kept, it helped us to keep the finance committee more in the loop and anybody else who was interested. So it ended up kind of a good communication vehicle as well as a place to ask more detailed questions. So three of us were there asking a lot more questions and the three of us had a great feel for what was in that new zero-based budget and it became a communication vehicle. Now, to your point, that's not the only place you're working on the budget.
Well, in particular, I mean, the single largest line item is teacher salaries.
Right.
During the negotiation process.
Well, that's a separate issue.
And not a separate issue.
Well, how can it be a separate issue when it's like 75% of the budget?
Well, to be, to be, there's a differentiation here a little bit. This committee is really more about the current budget. It's about the budget we're in. So it's, you know, we're getting updates, we're talking about some of that. And really, it's more about the process of the upcoming budget versus the integrating of the upcoming budget. And, so that, at least that's what we did this past year. And, you know, I think it worked pretty well because so much, I mean, a lot of what's happening in the current fiscal year budget informs the process for the next year's budget anyway. So from that standpoint, there's conversation, but it's, you know, that seemed to be, because we had these conversations when we formed this committee and initially the thought was, "Oh, yeah, this would be great to do," and then we realized, "Well, we can't do that." So, you know, we've, we've really kind of gone more to the chairs being involved in that discussion.
Right, so the chair of each committee...
Each chair being involved with the administration.
I'm not used to that.
Right, so the chair of each committee is still very involved in discussions around the budget.
So this is an...
Which can be more ad hoc because you don't have to post a public meeting.
This is an opportunity for the, for the school committee to have more in-depth discussion than we would want to have here.
Exactly.
Okay, that's right.
About what's going on.
And so it's a good point though because although Wally and I did it last time, it would not make a lot of sense for both of us to continue. Maybe it would be three new people, but at least two of those, if not all three, should be new because Wally and I, each as chairs, are going to be talking with Laurie and Jared regularly about that particular, right, each of our particular budget anyway.
Yeah.
So be thinking about that if you're interested in the Budget Subcommittee, that will lead to people to jump into that.
And what does it usually do?
That, at least, last year, you get to set it. Last year, we did it daytimes and kind of picked times that worked for everybody.
Okay.
We try to, I mean, when we can, we want to try to keep things, extra things to daytime just so we're not keeping Laurie and Jared here for another evening meeting. But, you know, daytime could be 9:00 AM, it could be 4:00 PM, right? It could be whatever works for that group of people. So then other suggestions were the Recreation Committee. You had brought that up.
Commission, that's all.
Commission, sorry.
They don't meet very often, but I think it's important, I know, I know, there's probably off, frequent communication between them.
Yes, we are in much closer communication with them.
Just because of many reasons, the BD Center, you know, they're running the after-school programs, on and on.
Yeah, just to have an observer there.
They're actually, they were here yesterday because they're starting to run some of our extracurriculars at the elementary schools.
And I'd like to see... They've taken overall the... Tightening that up a little. I looked at other towns, they seem to have a in-school, much more robust programs that we have. I'm not...
No, there's a whole conversation to be had there.
So we were with them yesterday, yeah. It's just, it's a good, they don't meet very often. In fact, they didn't yet from January to May.
Okay.
So that was not intended, I don't think, but it's not a, I think, last year kind of a thing.
Okay. Okay, good. And then you suggested the Climate, which one?
Climate Action Advisory Board, I looked it up.
Okay.
They're a big committee, they're, Dick Pappas is the current chair.
Yep, we know them.
And you were there when I, and so I think it's, they don't, particularly ones that don't get recorded, where I think they make many references to school activities, they're concerned about the schools and climate action and I think it's important that we're there to hear what those conversations are like.
Yep.
I've got a tough tale with the Sustainability Committee as well.
Yeah, so the other ones, you're...
They meet Tuesdays.
I created, I have two committees that are advising now, which are, you know, school committee representation, teachers, community members, et cetera. So the Sustainability Group, both are meeting four times a year and both ended up at the late afternoon, hour after teachers could come, so 3:45, 4 o'clock, something like that. Four times a year.
Okay.
Sustainability and then the other one is the Safety and Security.
I just...
Okay.
What is the status of the Town of Concord Facilities Group or Committee or...
They're discussing it with June 11th.
Yeah, we've been invited to the meeting on June...
So I think we just pencil that in on our list for now.
17?
Discussion at the select board level, FAC.
Of a town-wide facilities planning.
So let's keep that on our...
The other thing that's not on here, and I'm not exactly sure where we really stand on it, but we haven't disbanded the Campus Committee, the Regional Campus Committee.
Did we?
I think we did.
I thought we had. But anyway, I guess the question, we can check the formality of it, the question is, "What's the need?"
Yeah.
We do have a pretty big dangly thing.
Question mark out there. Oh, wait, what's that big elephant?
Yeah.
There are enough things that, you know, between, I mean, all of the work they did, identified things and made recommendations, but they're all still in play.
Very much so. And I guess the question is whether the committee, the big committee, needs the subcommittee or are we just, are we at this level now? We've got the, we've got a lot of information to work with.
Are we just making decisions?
Do we need a subcommittee or are we just revisiting decisions here?
That's probably worth just us putting on an agenda and discussing what our next step should be.
Parking, paving and...
Right.
Or a few other things. Menagee's building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should talk here, just to get.
We should talk here and figure it out. If we realize that we need a subcommittee to look into something, okay, we won't forget it, but we have a lot of information.
You've already done the homework. The philosophy is, you know, you got, you got a Concord issue, and then you have a Carlisle issue.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, getting sort of that line. I know, I don't want to speak to your Concord issue.
Right.
Enough of that going on. But from our end, I mean, that, the only, the only place where I mentioned this to, well, the only place that Carlisle has any real leverage is on capital projects. Just remember that. And there's a lot of people up there that say, okay, I have leverage.
Let's use our leverage.
Yes, so just, I'm not taking a position, I'm just.
Very good insight.
Think about, think about that as you, as you think about that issue.
We were there a lot, I would say. Not surprised to hear you say that.
Right. Okay.
So there are 17 committees here.
Quick question?
Yeah.
The Climate Advisory Board?
That's Concord.
That's, yeah, that's Concord. That's CCHS only, right?
No, so there's Concord.
Mostly dealing with the school in terms of climate.
No, there's a town. Concord has a Climate Action Advisory Board that's not school-related. It's just a town committee. But because they tend to look into a lot of things that are climate-related, and sometimes bring up things that relate to the schools, Cynthia was suggesting, we should have someone there as an observer, just so we know what's going on there.
And those things that relate to the schools, is it generally CCHS or other schools?
No.
Could be any of them.
All of them.
Could be all of them. Right now, the middle school is a, will come up a lot, because of the fact that we're in the design process, and there's a lot of discussion around sustainable design, obviously. But issues, but definitely, the high school plays into, you know, the high school comes up also, but all of the schools can come up, yes.
Heather, why don't we do some housecleaning? And the few that we all know what we want, maybe we should get them at the openers?
Well, I think, I think it would still be, it's just, did a little math here. There's 17 of these committees. Some of them, I think we're, we'd like to, even as we're sitting here, wondering if we ought to rotate these observer roles for the FinCom and Select Board among all five of us, rather than try to pick two people who have to go to them. But we can talk about that. The, and nine of them are joint, are things that really have a joint characteristic to them. So, you know, that boils down to somewhere in the vicinity of three apiece. Is that right? Yeah, it's two and a half apiece. So, I think it's probably easier than just trying to do that here. It would be better if you think about, you know, sort of give us five that you're interested in, in an order of preference, kind of thing.
Sounds good.
And, and we'll try to come back.
Those that you really don't want to.
Sure.
If you really don't want to, especially as new members. If you really don't want to, especially as new members, you should identify them.
Right. Also, what would be really helpful is daytime versus evening preferences. And hopefully, this balances out. I'll throw it out there for now. I have small kids, so for me, evening meetings are really hard. And I'm already going to have these and the building committee, which is going to be another evening. So I am going to try to avoid at all costs any other evening ones. I was just saying to Wally, I literally could not walk home tonight and say I was the Select Board observer. I would get kicked out of my house. So, we all have to balance that way, right? But I will take daytime ones, because I can do those. So hopefully, other people will say, oh, daytimes are terrible, I can do evenings. And, and those preferences, whether, you know, you want to throw it out there, but at least send it to us with your first choices, so that we can differentiate.
What I'd like to do is send to you what you, one of you send to us by way of a new list.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Yes, yes.
While working off the same slate.
Yep, we'll do that.
I can take the Cepac, because I'm already on that committee anyway.
Which one?
Cepac.
Cepac. Oh, great. Okay, good.
And we'll take that one off.
And you go there.
So you can answer.
Wonderful.
That's all right.
Wonderful. We do have to have somewhat, probably some, what we did last year, Christine was the official rep, and I was kind of a backup for anything that was just Concord-related.
Good.
So someone else, it doesn't have to be me, but somebody else, maybe from Concord, can be a backup for Concord issues, but that's terrific.
Good.
Okay. Other ones, send us, to us, I see your point to you all about, we can hash out some, but it's getting late, I think we want to move on. So, let's try to move this along if we can.
I wanted to take, I guess it's more a regional thing. Bus depot operating costs. What you have on the agenda is a letter that came to Chair of the Regional Committee in 2012, when we were considering the building of the depot, and which we did do. We never have really formalized the, what's identified in here as a willingness to share in operating costs. And so we've decided to go down that road, and need to come up with, you know, what that plan looks like, so.
Yeah, you know, right now, Concord's paying the operating costs and the capital costs. And since there is documentation that Carlisle had intention to pay some operating costs, I think through the budget process last year, it was clearly mentioned as a priority to us from the Concord Finance Committee and such. I think we're going to need discussion on the vehicle of how we do this, because it's essentially got to go through the assessments. So if we put it through the regional budget, then the question becomes, Carlisle just pays its portion of the operating cost that way, but is Concord going to pay itself?
Right.
Becomes the circle we've got to undo there. So what works for one community doesn't work for the other. So we've just got to navigate some logistics. You all need to be part of that. We need to put some numbers in front of you, so you understand what kind of impact this will have. I think tonight, we're just sort of looking for a timeline of when we wanted to do this, and what steps to take next.
I, I, so, yeah.
No.
I totally don't understand something, but I totally don't understand something. So until now, in those years, Carlisle's not paying anything for transportation?
They're paying, no, they're paying for the buses, and the drivers, and the gas, and all of that.
So what's the operation?
It's about the bus depot itself, the building, and the lights, and the heat, and the operating cost of the depot building.
So it's not, it's not a huge number.
It really isn't a huge factor.
It's charging sparky.
The letter you have is, goes back to, you know, kind of long simmering dispute between the towns in terms of, Carlisle's always outsourced its busing.
It's self-assured.
Right, right, right. So I want to ask then, Jared, I guess, I'm not clear on, the depot is not full, because you take transportation, which has a K-8 and a 9-12 component, and you do some algorithm that figures out what the allocation is. And then the piece that's regional, you give us our share, right? So why is, why is not the depot kind of managed that? Forget the allocation to Carlisle, why isn't it folded into the school budget? What's different about it?
It, go ahead. Well, it's, I'm going to make them wrong. So it's a town building. So right now, the way that the, really everything, the formula we use, everything is a 60-40 split, for the most part, when it comes to K-8 being the 60%, and 9-12 being the 40%. Of that 40%, all the operating costs are go through the assessment. And roughly 24.75% is Carlisle's share, and the rest is Concord's.
That's the bus, the running of the buses. But the running of the building is not true.
So the building opened, so despite the 2012 date on there, the building opened in August of 2017. And it just hasn't actualized to how the operating costs are going to be managed, now that the building's online. So that's the discussion.
It doesn't, that building doesn't do anything but take care of the buses.
No, nothing else.
Does not have a different purpose.
No, no.
So it should be, so is that a budget thing that Concord's going to do this year? Are they going to move?
Well, I think that's the timing we wanted to talk with you on, and talk on process a little bit. And we need to give you a strong recommendation on what the fiscal process that's appropriate to this would be. And we can see there's going to be a little bit of discussion needed at a couple of different places, just because of bureaucracy, frankly, so.
I think from a timing, timing standpoint, it would be ideal to get this resolved before budgets.
Yeah, yes.
So if we get, sort of knock this off in September.
So the thing from, I mean, I'd certainly, speaking for Carlisle, I don't have an objection to shouldering our fair share of the thing. The thing I would, you should be mindful of in the Concord side, is something that we're going through right now with the FinCom, where they're, they're starting to push stuff into our operating budget that was treated differently before. And without going into specifics, what they're doing is they're shifting the costs that they absorb into your budget. The pot is the same at the end, but, other than that Carlisle will take a piece of it. But it will make your increase, like we were talking about your E&amp;D, right? It makes you look like you have a higher increase. And you want to, again, when we talk about positioning and advocacy, you want to get that really, in my opinion, you want to get it granular and say, okay, these X dollars, you already were paying for it. The fact that you moved it from the left pocket to the right pocket, and actually look at your increase and adjust it down as an effective increase, and make them aware of that.
Right.
Because they will totally forget that.
Yeah.
And everybody's, oh, it's a 5% increase, like, what are you guys doing over there?
Right.
Well, wait a minute.
And one of the towns, they're 1,000%.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. Town must be saving money.
Right, so that just, that would be.
A good point.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Wally and I, we'll work on that over the summer and bring you recommendations.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Middle school building update, I can keep very quick. Don't worry, we're not going to go into details. There isn't much new, as you know, the election is scheduled for June 4th. The latest from the Select Board is that they approved the charge that they have been discussing. We know we now have two people assigned to it. They are continuing to take volunteers to the building committee, and the last I heard, I need to confirm, this is still the plan, but the last I heard at the next Select Board meeting, which is next Monday night, they will complete their nominations to the Select Board. And then on June 3rd, their meeting after that, they will seat the, sorry, building committee, did I say Select Board? They will seat the building committee June 3rd. That's the night before the election, which is really, I think, great forethought on the part of the Select Board, because they want to just set it up so that it's teed up and ready to run if everything passes at the polls. So what they have said is, if the election, if the question fails at the election, they will tell everybody on the building committee, thank you anyway, go home, but it'll be ready to go, just in case.
They increased the number of public.
Yes, thank you. The number of public residents, really just to make sure the committee had an odd number, they increased the number of resident volunteers from five to six. And then there's still an addition, an additional resident volunteer with expertise in sustainable building. So it's a total of seven, with at least one of them with sustainable building practice expertise. And at least one with kids in the school, or school-aged children. As well as other, other positions on the committee.
With a total number of 17.
Total number of 17.
An odd number.
Yep, to make it an odd number.
Good.
That's it. That's the, that's the quick version.
Okay, action items. We've done the first one.
I can talk on this stuff. Sure, so per the contracts, staff are entitled to bring their students, their children to those schools. We have an unwritten agreement for Carlisle teachers to also enroll their children.
It's unwritten.
Yeah. It's longstanding practice.
Okay.
We can talk on that further, but it is unwritten. Carlisle teachers have been allowed to, granted the opportunity to bring their children over if they've come up to Carlisle.
Right.
Because it's a stand, it's in Carlisle's contracts to bring their children. And we've had a longstanding practice of allowing Carlisle teachers to continue their kids up to the high school. So, it's a pretty extensive list this year, I'll let you read through. We've got a good, a good number of kindergartners coming in, and a few other requests as well. Little tidbit on the elementary-age kids, because of the way our enrollments are right now, if they have siblings, the kids have been going to Alcott, staff kids, so if they have siblings already there, they're going to go to Alcott. But any oldest children that are just coming in are going to go to Willard from here on. So, because, yeah, we have about a 60-student difference in those two schools right now, so.
So the practice had been, most kids were at Alcott?
Yeah, so.
Because it was sort of.
It's just about numbers.
It's always about numbers.
I think it switched probably five years ago. It had been Willard for a while.
It used to be Willard.
It used to be Willard, and then Alcott was Alcott.
And Alcott's bubbled, and Willard's dropped, and so we're going to shift them back over towards Willard. So this is standing practice to accept them every spring, and you accept them once, and then they're, they stay right on through.
I'll make a motion to approve staff requests for children to attend CCHS and CPS.
Now, there's actually a motion line, would you?
Oh, cool.
What I'll, I'll do the Concord, I'll make a motion.
I can't access, for some reason, I'm not.
It's too much.
Can I, I would like to.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I, you make a motion to the Concord Committee, that the Concord School Committee vote to approve the request of Mrs. Rivera, Ms. Smith, Mr. Robbins, and Ms. Brown to enroll their child in the Concord Public School, and that tuition be, will be waived.
Second.
Good. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, welcome children.
I would entertain a motion that the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to approve the requests of Ms. Graham and Mr. Lonergan to enroll their child in the Concord-Carlisle High School, and that tuition be waived.
Second.
He said he would accept a motion, that needs to be moved.
So moved, so moved.
Sorry. Any discussion?
Just applying grammar, should be their children.
Thank you.
And on the prior one as well, but I couldn't speak for Concord.
Yeah.
They have a strict gramm, grammar standard.
You're correct grammar, right. Our new grammatical expert.
The only one that is not English speaker.
It's a form of an amendment. We will change that language in the final results of the minutes.
I don't think you took a vote.
I didn't, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Sorry, I thought you were a little.
Next is, the, do we need to talk about this at all?
The Japan trip. Why don't I make a motion first? I'll move that the Concord-Carlisle School Committee vote to give David Nuremberg permission to begin planning the 2019-2020 Japan trip.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nothing, not specific about this request, but I think that in the future, it'd be nice if all of the trips would be brought to us at once, so we can have the bigger picture.
I will try my best. That's part of the big picture discussion we need to have because they trickle into us. So I will certainly, I'm working on it, I will make a concerted effort to get this a little more organized.
And that's consistent with what came up earlier.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, one of the things that, some of these trips take a little longer to plan than others.
Yeah.
Japan is, so we always hear about that really early, but yes, I don't disagree. So may I have a motion?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seven. I'll entertain a motion that the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve the CCHS trip to Germany for June twelfth through twenty, twenty nineteen through June twentieth, twenty nineteen, with the condition that a signed liability waiver is received from all participants.
So moved.
In a second, you should have had this one earlier, I'll just acknowledge that, so that's part of that big picture.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just curious, I mean, that's like coming up.
Yeah, I, we have really, we have really struggled with getting them to this committee in a timely way. So Mike and I have got to sit, I think I need face-to-face meetings with the staff is probably the answer there.
I mean, these guys must be already signed up and.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
I would not suggest to stop it, but to bring it to us is a total federal plea after it's paid.
Totally agree.
That's not the right.
I completely agree. So I think I need some face time at the high school is probably part of it. It's a message we've sent, but we need to do it in person and stress. I did turn down a domestic trip that was coming, they didn't get it to us in time and we didn't have a meeting planned and I just said sorry. So I think we're going to have, I'm just going to have to take a harder line on the planning timelines.
These are part of Q five, right? Especially these foreign trips.
This one is, this Germany one is.
So these are known about.
Yep.
So you're, you're taking this responsibility, but I still think it's worth asking the question, what could have gone differently on the, the teacher admin end of the high school?
We need to make a solid plan over there right now. The teachers are sending Mike things as they get to it and I think we have not stressed enough to them the importance of this piece of the process. And I, we've allowed that to be sort of secondhand communication to them or it's just been an email and because we approve it anyway.
Right.
We got to back up and say, from here on, that's not going to happen. And here's the timeline, you've got to hit it. And I turned one down because I didn't have a meeting to even bring it to, never mind, I didn't have much notice. We just got to tighten the whole thing up and give them notice that it's changing.
And if you want us to vote on something that's, here's a deadline for these, we will not consider them afterwards.
Yes, exactly.
That would be.
And is there a process?
There is. Mike has done a good job of at least tightening up the way the forms are done and the information he asks for. We can certainly take feedback from you about what you get when you see it here. Up until a year ago, we didn't know how a common form they were coming in on. So we've made progress, but not nearly enough.
Yeah, I'm talking more about how, how expensive.
Yeah, no, that, that's part of the work we need to do. Teachers are proposing things, they work with an outside company and they bring us up.
I mean, those are for-profit companies.
So.
And I understand why they work with them, it's almost virtually possible.
Insurance, insurance wise, we really do need them on.
Yes, no, I get it, but it's just.
Speaking of.
Part of the big picture, we've got to, we've got to look at it.
So where, or really, it's a Jared question maybe is, are you fully briefed with your agent or your care or something like that?
We had a little cleanup to do this fall. We had some cleanup this fall that we took care of.
Any other comments?
As I have kids in high school and they're going on some of the Q five trips. The trip to Germany, I actually learned about it when I was in the presentation in high school months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we have a process problem here, I'm not denying that at all. Yeah, okay.
So are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? A seven. So the next item is.
Next one.
The vote to appoint Ruth Grooby.
Grooby.
Grooby. As Director of Student Services, do you want to?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. So we had a very extensive search for Director of Student Services. This position will really meld our Director of Special Ed, which will be still the primary role. But this person, Ruth, will also work with the ELL, mental health, the nurses and the overlapping services that have been splintered throughout the leadership of the district. So we thought, for very good reasons, we need them. Because the kids overlap, we need one person overseeing all of that. So through a very extensive and thorough process that Kristen Herbert ran, we had a big stakeholder group of about twenty people do the first round of interviews. They actually screened resumes, Kristen had them in writing at the beginning. That, the group actually screened resumes and weighed in on paper. Those candidates then came to a very extensive screening, set of interviews, first round of interviews with twenty-some stakeholders in the room of all various backgrounds, staff, parents, all, all very wide range. We then narrowed that down to two finalists. And then the two finalists came in, they did forums with staff and with parents and then they both came back for final rounds with me. And then we had school committee participation also at that point. And I have to say, the two finals were both very, very strong and very competent, very capable. And really, we had the gift of being able to look for fit. And Ruth really rose to what we need in this place and time for culture and connections and philosophy. And so she's very excited and ready to come work with us. So we need, it is a school committee appointment, so I make the right. We've had representation at the table, so it's a consensus that this is the right choice.
I would speak up and say, Cynthia and I were both part of these interviews and I came out and I completely agreed that both of them were great candidates and we would have been very lucky to have either. And it was truly a matter of which one rose slightly higher in terms of fit. And I was completely behind Ruth as the choice, I thought she was fabulous.
Yeah.
I'm so excited, I think she'll be a great fit for us, so.
Yeah.
Fully supportive.
Great, thank you for all the work you did on this.
I think Kristen Herbert deserves.
Yes, yes, she should, yes.
Our gratitude for the process, which I thought was very, very welcome. A lot, a lot of the candidates were good and the process was very difficult to go from eight, what, eighteen to six to two or something like that. But then thankfully, those two were so strong, the only difficulty was they were both so strong.
Right. It's a big problem.
Yes, and Court, thank you for being a part of everything. That's a big time commitment.
I just, I want to commend all of us for a continued, strong process.
Yeah.
Fine selecting people, transparent and as transparent as it can be. And, and I'm always impressed with the quality of the candidates I get, which speaks to the quality of the district. And, you know, to my left are two shining. I'll make a motion that the Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to appoint Ruth Grooby as the Director of Student Services.
Second.
Is that for both committees?
True.
Oh, yeah, yes, you said it for both, so seconded for both?
Yes, seconded for both.
Good.
So all the, all those, any further discussion? All those for Concord Carlisle, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And everyone in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, let's appoint Ruth Grooby, we're talking.
There we go.
Very, very excited to have her.